Good this evening, we are going to open, bring the meeting to order. Do I have a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we remove item four B from the agenda and postpone item five B.
Second.
That was motion by Ms. Darlene Roberson and seconded by Mr. Darin Callen.
Right now, I'll speak to item four B first. Are you ready for discussion?
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
I would like to ask the Strategic Education Liaison, why is this back on the agenda?
Well ma'am, due to all of the teacher and parent concerns, I thought it would be best for it to be brought back before the board. And we do have that right for it to be brought back before the board.
That's not how it works. So, we had a presentation, a phenomenal presentation by our C O and our Deputy Director. Teachers, principals, scholars spoke to it. We had the reading of the policy as well as an opinion by our General Counsel. We took a vote and the motion failed six to three. We don't continue to get mulligans. The last mulligan that you all got, we still have two board chairs. The motion failed, we need to remove this from the agenda so that we can get on with the business of the district.
Mr. Kelly, is there any policies or procedures that you can address to this?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this up, Ms. Roberson. So, the conversation with counsel and with the board as a whole around the policy I G. In the moment, of course, we asked, she went, we asked, oh, she's over here, sorry. We asked our counsel to give us a reading on the policy of, was it E I G, I think. And in its, without context, I G certainly seems to insinuate that the board doesn't have authority over curriculum. Both by state law and policy, that's not the case. And when I went back and looked at the policy I G in the context of a policy manual, which is obviously, it's a proof text, small little piece of a bigger thing. I was brought to policy B D B, which is the Board and Superintendent Relationship Policy. And I'll just read you a quick excerpt of it. It says that the Board holds the superintendent responsible for the administration of its policies and the execution of board decisions. So, in that context, I would petition that any policy that tells the superintendent to do anything is rather a directive of the board to the superintendent and not a migration of responsibility from the board to the superintendent. And anyway, in the same way, a manager would tell their staff, I want you to go paint the wall blue, or I want you to go fill out the form this way, it's no different. So, the board being able to make a decision as a body politic with a vote, would then be able to direct the superintendent to literally anything within state law.
Well, I'd like to speak to this. We voted down a motion six to three that was presented at our last meeting. We had a tremendous amount of testimony and to review. So, we are following policy with regards to curriculum implementation. And we are supposed to be gracious in accepting majority rule. And I find it troubling that a small contingency of this board is trying to manipulate the situation.
I agree with that. And can I also re-
Sorry, the chairman has the right to call on. Ms. McKinney has actually been trying to get the floor for a while.
So, what I would like to address is this is a completely different motion. It is not asking the same thing as the previous motion. And so, that's why I think it should be honored with discussion is because it's so different.
I think, Ms. Roberson, can I, because I think we do need to address what Mr. Kelly mentioned. And I appreciate that you reading from that policy. But I think also, whether or not the board is supposed to direct the superintendent, the superintendent carries out the board's decisions, we also have to acknowledge and honor that the superintendent is competent and capable of deciding on the pieces we do not actually understand. And as a board, the reason that we entrust him with policies beyond the B policies is because we don't actually have the level of expertise. We would actually only be making decisions, and in this case, only making a decision based on some emails, not actually the science of how effective this curriculum is, what the data is showing. And that is only one input. And so, I think you're right that the superintendent is carrying out board decisions. But curriculum is not actually a decision in the B section, which is the board's powers and duties, that is entrusted to us directly. There's a huge component of this work that the district does that gets handed over to the superintendent, and we are supposed to trust him. And he actually spoke out and said that the E L curriculum needed to stay. And I realize that it is a different motion, that is a tactic, it's a way to get it back on. Doesn't mean that it should be there.
And Madam Chair, I would like to-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, I didn't acknowledge that on the floor.
I understood. I'm merely looking at it from a legal and policy standpoint. Not a, I trust Mr. Kennedy, no doubt. I'm merely pointing out the fact that we do, in fact, because the conversation last time was around whether or not we have the authority to direct policy. And it's my interpretation and my opinion as the policy liaison that we do. And it's further under state law mandate that we do. So, that, I was not speaking to a lack of trust with Mr. Kennedy, but rather the powers of the board.
Ms. Roberson?
Yes, and to finish addressing the Strategic Chair's concern that we had a lot of concern from parents and other folks through email. If we would have allowed staff to do what they promised, they are in the process of creating listening sessions to address those concerns from individuals that were in our position. So, what we have to do as a board is we have to allow the staff to do their jobs. We cannot continue to come back here and request mulligans over and over when a motion is defeated. We have a lot of business to take care of. The motion needs to be removed. And let me speak to, it's a different motion. It's a circumventing the system motion. Policy I J does not speak to curricula, it speaks to resources. And curricula and resources and textbooks are two different things. We have to leave the job of the staff to the experts, and we have to govern. This is not governing, this is circumventing. I move that item four B be removed from the agenda.
Can I address that, Ms. Lee?
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
My concern is this, that the district last year, upon giving the board the right to approve this curriculum, has given the board, this time, the board has the right to be able to address this because the district gave us that right. Okay, well, apparently it did when the board approved this curriculum.
I actually addressed that in that last meeting, that that was actually an oversight in that we should not have done it then, and we certainly shouldn't do it now.
Okay, let's come back to order, let's come back to order, let's come back to order.
I have something.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Can you please give us the fundamental difference between the two motions that we have here?
Can I address the motion?
Yeah, what is the difference between this motion and the motion from before?
Well, the difference between this motion is that we will allow this curricular choice to be, to remain for the 2022, 23 school year. Allow the 11 acceleration schools to continue with this E L using discretion per the 2010, I mean, the February 2010 letter from Mr. Kennedy to principals. Other schools currently using E L may continue with it as a resource by, but teachers will have the flexibility to use other previously used resources in curriculum where they deem necessary to teach South Carolina standards. And correction, that is for the February 10th.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, as Chair, we are getting into the debate and discussion over the motion itself. Right now, we have a motion on the floor to remove that item as well as one other item. Let's go ahead and close this now, and go ahead and vote on the motion that's on the floor. And then we'll move forward and come into discussion on the actual item.
Ms. Watley, you didn't hear the, there's a second part of the motion that-
I know, that's what I, that's what I was pointing to. It was to remove this item as well as another item on the agenda. So, let's go ahead and deal with that, and then we can-
What I'm saying is, there were two parts, we addressed four B, we did not address five B, but it's all stated in one motion.
Okay, so you have something to add on five B?
Ms. Roberson made the motion.
Well, I actually am not finished addressing the first motion. And Robert's Rule allows me two times to speak on an issue. And so, I would like my second turn to speak.
What is your first? I don't hear.
You didn't hear the advice of-
She's advising the Chair.
So, are we separate-
Are we done?
The two?
Are we moving forward?
Well, the discussion was closed out improperly, and now there's a vote up here for us to take.
I'm offering you the opportunity to make another statement.
My statement is, again, to the Strategic and Curriculum Chair. The motion is not, it's not proper. And you cannot continue to use your position to circumvent policy I J or whatever, the curriculum. It is not the same.
Okay, you're repeating the statement. So, let's go ahead and take the vote, and then we'll move forward with the discussion on the actual items. If this motion fails. Did you have something?
Is she going to restate the motion?
No.
Five B is listed, and I've not spoken to five B.
Right. You need to be able to speak to five B.
Well, that's what I was asking, if you had something to add before the vote.
Okay, let me speak to five B. I'm asking for five B to be postponed because the informational, the draft information that was put down here, I don't see that we could use this information because we have no legislation to reference. And how could we have a draft informational without a reference policy from legislation? We can also, we cannot make policy in anticipation of what's coming from the State House. I can anticipate that I'm going to have a headache when I leave here tonight. Should I take the Tylenol now? So, we have to be mindful of what we are doing. And secondly, how could you write a policy with such strong language and content when we don't know what legislation is doing? We don't know if the anticipated legislation is in the House, is in the committee, or when it's coming down. And there's a proper way to propose policy. Policy should have input from staff. Just as this encumbered policy is coming before us, it came from the state, and they gave us a timeline. We cannot continue to pick policies to amend. Policies that we amend affects teachers, it affects staff, it affects the district. And we have to be careful that we are dangerously moving.
I have actually taken ibuprofen in anticipation of a headache. But nevertheless, I'll refer over to the policy liaison.
I would like to say something as well.
One moment, I've called upon the policy liaison to address, and then I'll come back to you.
This is Watley, if you don't mind, I'd welcome any feedback from the board.
You can see to Ms. Temple, okay?
Thank you. I did some research. I looked at the language that is proposed in this policy to see where the law. In fact, I asked Mr. Kelly many times, several times through his email, what laws was he referencing, and I didn't find anything. I did find, however, that there were some 70 pieces of legislation that mentioned the word gender, but there were only two pieces of legislation that announced or used the word pronoun, H 3827 and S 424. So, then I looked at the status of these two legislative pieces. H 3827 is in committee since January 26th, so there's been no movement on this particular piece of legislation. The Senate Bill 424 has no status. So, I cannot find the language that's in this policy that relates to the laws that are present in South Carolina. So, I just don't see how we can put the cart before the horse and have a draft policy for something that we don't know what's going to be anticipated.
Mr. Kelly?
So, and I apologize, Dr. Temple, I did see your note, and I think I replied to one of the couple of emails. But, so it's two 74 and four 24 are the two?
3827 in the House and S 424. And I pulled those, I pulled those, and they talk about, these are policies that talk about maintaining the learning and work environment unencumbered by social or political activism, and they have elements there-
Dr. Temple?
-related to concepts of discrimination.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but he was actually in the process of answering you.
Okay, I thought he didn't.
That's okay, no, that's okay.
I didn't mean to.
You're, I know you didn't, you're far away. It's two 74 and four 24, those are the two draft bills that I'm referencing. And the reason, I believe it was Ms. Roberson pointed out about making amending policies, we're not proposing or even discussing a proposed amended policy here tonight. What I'm wanting to do is put this out to the public. I think, I'm not going to speak for everyone. I know I ran on being transparent, and I know a number of our colleagues did as well. And so, the intent here is to garner public input because I think it's very important that the public get to speak to this and teachers and stakeholders. To your point, Ms. Roberson, I did work with legal counsel, district legal counsel on this policy and the language, actually two different lawyers at two different times, and already have gotten feedback from, from at least one teacher who said, hey, I don't like this. And I asked her if she would be part of a committee to discuss it and talk about it. So, the intent here is to garner feedback and input from our stakeholders.
May I call for the vote?
Yes, let's call. Does everybody have the window for the vote? No? Just to clarify, no vote means the items stay on the agenda, a yea vote means the items are removed. Is that correct?
I don't have a voting option.
Twenty minutes ago, it came up.
I think there's a problem with the windows not popping up. Should we move to a voice vote? And she doesn't have a window to vote. Ms. McKinney, do you want to voice vote?
Certainly.
Nay. Okay, the screen is reflective of the votes. Please check the screen and make sure that your vote is reflected accurately. If there's no objections, the motion fails, and we will move on with the adoption of the agenda.
I saw move.
Second? Mr. Kelly moves to adopt the agenda, Ms. Bailey, seconds.
If I could have technical assistance, I still don't have a window.
But I vote aye.
Okay, the window is up. Please check and see if your vote is correctly represented. All right, the motion passes. And so, now we will move on to item number two on the agenda, which is public comments. And I will refer to our Vice Chair, Ms. Carla Bailey.
Please come forward as I call your name. If a person is on this roster and you are not here, you will be skipped. So, please come forward and state your full name. Patrick Martin, you want me to do three at a time? Three?
I'm sorry, three at a time. Three at a time, and don't forget, you were going to say.
Good evening, I'm here to speak about a topic which requires no ibuprofen, that is teacher compensation. My name is Patrick Martin, and I'm a CCSD teacher, and I've been teaching for more than 20 years. Part of the teacher compensation task force here with CCSD. And I want to, sorry for putting the cart before the horse, but talk to you today about the recommendation of the task force, which is $58,000 starting salary with an increase at every level. I sent out a survey to gauge community support about this task force initiative, and I received 1,800 responses in just over a week overwhelmingly supporting this measure. I think the community has thrown its arms around the idea that we need our teachers in the classroom who are passionate, invested, and educated. Those surveyers, people surveyed were not only teachers and parents, but also community members. Over 200 respondents gave personal anecdotes, of which I will summarize and send to each of you. But for the sake of time tonight, I just ask that you please invest in our teachers, who are there for our students, and in our budgets, our statements of values. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yes, and I was asked to make this statement, knowing that if you are not here, we will not be taking comments from someone else speaking in your place, so.
That's not, that's not lawful. They can defer to someone to speak. They can defer.
Okay, the next three people up are Michael Antonelli-
Can we actually get a response to that, because that's inappropriate.
What does the policy state? B E.
Yep, point of order.
Okay, while she's looking that up, can I have Michael Antonelli, Reverend Nelson Rivers III, and Sarah Burris to come forward?
Good evening, my name is Michael Antonelli, I'm the principal of Carolina Park Elementary. I've been a principal in CCSD for the past 17 years. I'm asking that the board do everything in their power tonight, not only to raise teacher salaries per the task force recommendation, but to the greatest extent possible. Over my career, I've witnessed the role of teachers become much more complex. And while the compensation for this profession simply has not kept pace, I estimate that I've seen an 80% reduction in high-quality applicants compared to earlier in my career. On top of additional vacancies to fill each year as more teachers leave our profession, as a result, we are facing a crisis as we work to find excellent teachers for our children. I'd also like to address the motion before you tonight regarding the elementary E L curriculum, which our school is currently implementing. Is there some questionable content in this elementary curriculum? Absolutely. Are there also many positive aspects to this curriculum? Absolutely. I believe as a district, we can remove the questionable content and still benefit from all the positive aspects of this curriculum as a consistent basis for instruction across grade levels in schools. While I believe educators should have flexibility in implementation, I also believe that a consistent district-wide curriculum is a crucial foundation to have in place. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Board members, Superintendent Kennedy, I am the Reverend Nelson B. Rivers III, the proud pastor of the Charity Missionary Baptist Church, Liberty Hill Community of North Charleston, South Carolina, also the National Vice President of Religious Affairs for the National Action Network. I'm a proud graduate of Burke High School, class of 1968. That means I went my entire public school career in the segregated school system, courtesy of this very school board to which I address right now. I want to share with you Act 2639. It was called the Act to amend the law relating to slaves and free persons of color. It was a law that was passed in 1830, or became the law in 1835, April 1, against a black man who had a school in Charleston named Daniel Payne. They found out he was teaching black people to read. Two lawyers from Charleston, haha, were in the general assembly, and they got the whole state general assembly to make it illegal in 1835 to teach black people to read. In 1835, it became against the law, teach any black person, free or enslaved, to read. That was the law from 1835 until 1963. In 1963, another lawsuit was filed to bring about desegregation. I say to every school boards from 1980 till now, what I'm about to ask you right now, which side of the law are you on? Are you on the side that says it's illegal to have a black person read at the same level of white children? Or do you vote against that crazy idea that came out of racism baked into the fabric of Charleston, South Carolina? I got it, I'm trying to keep on going without acting like a fool. So, I want to tell you this.
Sorry, your time is up.
You said that you want prayer, you want prayer in this meeting? I'm going to pray for you right now. Lord, give them a spirit of justice, understanding, and fairness. If they don't have one, knock it into them, God bless you.
And just as an update, we did have legal counsel weigh in. If you are not here actually in person, no one can speak on your behalf.
Can we get that? Can you tell us where that is, where that is inside of the policy? And B right now, where at?
It's a standard practice that one can yield their time. Why would this policy supersede the fact that people can yield their time? We can make it say that, but we can also just decide that we're going to be, you know, knee-to-knee with the community.
Okay, let's come to order, let's continue with the public comments. We've had a ruling, and we're going to move on. We're moving on. Ms. Waters, please don't have me call security to remove you.
To do what, Leah?
Because I'm calling you to order.
To do what, Leah? We can decide to let the community speak. We do not have to do what she just said, that is an opinion, that's not-
Well, it's, we're carrying it, Ms. Bailey.
And who are you? We can call a vote, but you actually cannot decide that, do you understand that?
This is the policy.
You are chairing the meeting, you are not a czar.
Ms. Sarah Burris.
Some people just like theatrics.
We might need to remind the public that you have one minute, it's not two because we have so many people. We're not meaning to cut you off, we're just trying to stay on the time.
Am I good to start now? Okay, good evening, my name is Sarah Burris, and tonight I come to you as a parent of three children in Mount Pleasant Schools in favor of the E L curriculum. The E L curriculum is not perfect, but it has been shown to increase our students' reading scores, higher-order thinking skills, and critical thinking skills. All skills we want our graduates to have. The level of growth school districts across the country have seen with the implementation of E L is incredible. So, why wouldn't we want all of our students to be taught using this curriculum? Because a group of people have decided that they don't want their children to see people who aren't white in books? Because we are afraid if our children are taught to think and question the world around them, they might learn from past mistakes and work to change the future. We say parents should have a say in what their children are taught. So, what about those of us who do want E L? Who want our children to become critical thinkers, to question the world around them and formulate their own opinions, to be exposed to all types of people, which they will encounter in the real world? As a parent, I want my children to be taught using one of the best, most highly-rated curriculums, and that is E L. All means all, thank you.
Next up is Katie Edwards, John Reed, and Connor Travis.
Good evening, hello, everybody. My name is Katie Dangerfield Edwards, and I wanted to say thank you for your service. Thank you to all the CCSD employees that are here tonight. Thank you for listening to our feedback. I'm here to voice my support for the increase in teacher salaries. I'm here to voice my support for the increase in teacher salaries and classified employees who are the root and so important to our school. I attended CCSD schools first through 12th. I'm now a parent of two kids in this district, and I'm the president of an elementary schools PTO organization in Mount Pleasant. I'll be brief, we need teacher salary increases. The current pay levels do not allow people to live in our district and make ends meet without multiple jobs. We're seeing the effects, our kids are seeing the effects, and we need change. Teachers are the root of our society, and we need to take care of our teachers. Happy teachers, happy students. Let's raise the mileage rate and get them the money they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is John Reed, and I am speaking from the perspective of 50 years of experience running large, complex organizations in all three sectors. 10 years direct association with expeditionary learning schools and another 10 working with and for CCSD, where my kids went to school. In my experience, one of the attributes of a system that is failing its customers, if you will, is its inability to implement almost anything with fidelity. This has been CCSD's history, and the reasons for it are too numerous to mention in the next 24 seconds. EL and ELA curriculum, however, so far, has been fully and faithfully implemented because it's working well for all kids and most teachers, as you've come to learn, in part due to the effective use of content relevant to their lived experience. If you now overrule senior educators in their decision to standardize on EL, you cripple their ability to do their jobs, you contribute to the district's dysfunction, and you become one more reason why this system fails to serve kids of color and in poverty and their families.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Connor Travis, I'm a sixth-grade teacher here in Charleston County. I'm here tonight in strong support of the compensation task force proposal of a $58,000 starting salary and step increases for step 30 to 40. It's not breaking news that most teachers in this district have a second job, myself included. The current salary structure of Charleston County makes living and teaching in Charleston very difficult. While this proposal will help the teachers, it will be our scholars that reap the most benefits from this. I believe this proposal will decrease the number of teachers forced to have a second job. If our time and energy outside of school can be focused on ourselves and our students rather than that second job, scholars will have rested, prepared, and more effective teachers that are ready to provide the most meaningful instruction possible. Here at CCSD, we say that students are the heart of our work, and we have an amazing opportunity to prove just that right here, right now, with this proposal. Thank you to the task force, and thank you for your time tonight.
Please come forward, Jamon Blake, Ashley Dorsey, and Susan King.
Good evening, and I am back. My name is Jamon Blake, and on behalf of District One Constituent School Board Member, I am here to receive the answer to that million-dollar question we've been waiting on for six-plus years. At our last meeting, Mr. Barory informed District One that there was a school in District One, in Charleston County District, that started with only 200 students and later rose to 600 students. Why not give District One a chance? In that same meeting, Mr. Kelly informed us that District One's tax-paying dollars goes towards Charleston County School District. So if the answer is no to our question, run us our money. So I ask to you, so I say to you today, and I asked this last time on behalf of District One, because we're not gonna ask you again, and I mean this respectfully, respectfully, are we getting our school in District One? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Dorsey, and I serve as the principal and the instructional leader at Laurel Hill Primary School in North Mount Pleasant. For the past several years, our teachers have been begging for a comprehensive reading curriculum to meet the needs of our students. At Laurel Hill, we began using EL modules and the EL Skills Block this year, and the adoption of the EL curriculum has provided a framework for appropriate reading instruction. Within the components of this program, we are seeing a greater level of participation and engagement from all of our students. The program also embeds texts that are rigorous, diverse, and provide equity of voice. All students should have access to literature and a literacy program that elevates their learning, considers a culture outside of their own, and creates awareness and engages students in meaningful and intentional conversations. We set thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours to allow our teachers time to dive in and build these modules. Selecting just a few schools to get to use this comprehensive program would be detrimental to our students and would not put them at the heart of our work. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Susan King, and I serve as the principal at Sullivan's Island Elementary School. I'm speaking tonight on the importance of having a comprehensive, research-based curriculum framework like EL education. I heard earlier that happy teachers make happy students. That's very true, and it may come as no surprise that the number-one influencer of student learning, the number-one factor, is collective teacher efficacy. And that means a shared belief, a confidence among a staff or a district that we can make a difference in learning for all students. So collective teacher efficacy is nurtured by very high-level collaboration. Relying on SC standards in isolation or handpicking this and that curriculum, that will not provide the structure that we need for this type of deep work. Collective teacher efficacy is the highest influencer of student learning. Let's support that through district implementation of EL education.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Samantha Blake, James Dallas, and Liz Jenkins.
Good evening, my name is James Dallas, and I'm the proud principal at EB Allen County Elementary School and proud to be represented by Board Member Darling Roberson. I appear before you again this evening bewildered as to why we continue to have this same conversation over and over about the merits of EL. The more I've thought about this, I've concluded that this is all about psychological power and entitlement, which is truly on display this evening. The more power one has, the more they control the narrative. The narrative is only about telling the story of dominant culture and omitting the lived experiences of others. When there appears to be a threat to the dominant culture's entitlement, their power, and their self-absorbed view of the world, some resort to silencing the perspectives of other people. They are not interested in what other groups of people think, feel, and believe. This is truly dangerous. What message are we sending to our children? As educators, we are to teach our children true humanity, to put others before themselves, and place genuine importance on listening to the ideas and perspectives of others. All voices matter, there is no hierarchy of human value. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Lizzie Jenkins, and I'm in my seventh year of teaching. I'm here to support the teacher compensation task force at 58,000 starting salary, which will also then increase salaries across degree levels and steps. I was born and raised in Mount Pleasant and intended Charleston County schools as a child. Two years ago, I finished my master's degree in education, hoping that would help alleviate some financial stresses. Last year, my family of four had to relocate to Hughie because we could no longer afford the cost of living in Mount Pleasant, a town that I had lived in my whole life. Since then, things have continued to increase in costs. I tutor twice a week and sign up for any additional pay opportunities available at my school. My family is still living paycheck to paycheck. I've gotten to the point where if nothing changes, I will have to leave teaching, not because I want to, but because my family can no longer afford for me to be a teacher. I am one of many in this situation who are being forced out of teaching to find better pay opportunities. If something doesn't change, the growing teacher shortage will only worsen with time. Thank you.
So. Is Samantha Blake not here? Um, next up is Kayla Clark, Kayla Wilkins, and Kashi Hamlin.
Good evening, my name is Kayla Clark, and I'm the parent to two students in Mount Pleasant. Both of my children have been stretched this year in ways they've never experienced previously, thanks to the EL curriculum. They have read about how others live around the world and have lived throughout history. Never have they once felt diminished or ashamed of who they are, but rather their own understanding of humanity has grown. They see the world around them as part of the larger fabric of a global community, and that has made me, as a mother, so incredibly proud. After listening to the board the last few meetings, I began to be concerned as some alluded to the fact that the EL curriculum is only good for the black and brown children in our district. I urge you to consider how fragmenting our district and allowing pockets to choose and pick something else, perhaps not even research-based, denies all of our children the opportunity to learn and grow together. Just as this is important for our black and brown children to see themselves in the text they read, so too is it important for my children to see and hear about the lives of others and gain a global perspective, that is which on our SC South Carolina graduate profile. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is Kayla Wilkins here? Okay. Kashi Hamlin. Megan Coeen, Kelly Stalkup, and Katya Gathers.
Good evening, if I'm understanding your motion.
Ma'am, can you please state your name?
Kelly Stalkup. If I'm understanding your motion, you're stating that teachers could use a basal series that is seven or more years old and the open court phonics program. The open court phonics program is a whole-group program. It does not allow for small-group instruction or differentiation. The basal series do not reach the complexity of the standards we have now, much less the standards that are coming from the state next year. All of our students deserve a curriculum that aligns with current reading research. Basals do not. We need EL, which allows students, all students, access to the standards as federal and state law requires, and represents all of our students in the text.
Thank you, ma'am.
Katisha Gathers from Hunley Park Elementary School. I have stood at this podium, this is my third time now, sharing with the board at previous board meetings the value of EL education or EL curriculum. It celebrates diversity and allows all students to think intensively and critically. This is the goal of education. This evening, the board will discuss an option for the EL curriculum, which is implementing a curriculum that has been housed in the warehouse several years ago and is not aligned with the, it was aligned with the 2015 standards, not the current one. It will not support the current standard's rigor or what students are expected to know at each grade level. The implication of this is students will not demonstrate grade-level reading proficiency or meet the outcomes for our current standards. Additionally, we have new teachers who have not been trained in this curriculum. If my job is to ensure teachers receive professional development on the curriculum and students are proficient, the option of using an outdated curriculum does not support me in my role. I ask the board to consider this action's implications.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Anna Stahl, Denise Brown, Shalandra Middleton. Okay, Phil Davis, Allison Crawford, Lakeisha Watson.
Good evening, my name is Allison Crawford, and I want to speak to the teacher compensation salary increase of the base of $58,000. I recently stepped back into the classroom because I love teaching. During my time off, I left when COVID hit. I was working in a field that was heavily dominated by men, one that required no degree. I left teaching with five years of experience at a master's level, and in my first year away, I almost doubled my salary. As a woman, I was valued, my work respected, and my salary reflected it. I can't say the same for education. Teachers are undervalued, and I believe this is because teaching is largely a female-dominated profession. If the opposite were true, it being male-dominated, I don't think we'd be having this conversation, and we wouldn't be seeing the mass exodus of teachers leaving the education field. If you want to keep teachers and you value us, we need a salary that reflects those beliefs. Thank you.
Lakeisha Watson. Stephanie Ross, Angelica Traho, and Kim Deaton.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Ross, and I'm here to support the teacher compensation task force. I've been a teacher in Charleston County for 33 years. I have dedicated my career to being a middle-school math teacher. When I became a single parent 15 years ago, I couldn't afford to buy a house, much less make my monthly expenses on a teacher's salary. I had to supplement my income with many hours of tutoring each week to meet my monthly expenses. I taught summer school to help buy a car. My salary was frozen for many years because the step increase stopped at 25 years. I even had to retire last year in order to receive my salary plus my retirement to help pay for my daughter's wedding this past fall. Needless to say, being a teacher did not afford me to put much money away into my savings all these years. I hope to be able to continue to work as a retired teacher for a while, until I can afford to save enough money to at least buy a condo. It's very sad and disappointing that my counterparts in other states, with much less teaching experience and/or degrees, are making salaries much higher than ours. It's very expensive to live in Charleston nowadays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Kim Deaton. I'm a third-grade teacher at Sullivan's Island Elementary School, and I'm in the second year of implementing the EL program. EL, what it is, expeditionary learning, learning as a journey, to map the standards of the trails. My job as a teacher is to navigate that map and steer students down the right trail by facilitating discussion, instruction to teach the standards. In the classroom, I'm the teacher, I'm the instructional leader. My role isn't to parent. This program allows for involvement of all students in a classroom of diverse learners, movement through a variety of protocols or tasks, autonomy for a teacher to add in or take away based on class data and understanding, consistency from grade to grade and school to school, even exposure in geography and science standards. What it isn't, it's not easy. It requires a lot of planning and collaboration with other teachers and supportive admin, but the results are clear and measurable and positive. What my third-grade students say. My vocabulary has grown, I'm a better writer. I can collaborate with other students, I can have a meaningful discussion, I can talk through what I think. I'm proud of my work, I'm a better reader. Those are student voices.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I have Spencer Conley, Jennifer Matthews, and Beth Hale?
Hi, good evening, my name is Jennifer Matthews, and I am here in support of Teacher Compensation Act. I am speaking on behalf of myself, my husband, and for the many teachers who wanted to both attend tonight's meeting as well as speak, but were unable to attend as they were working their second and/or third jobs to help make their ends meet. I, myself, tutor four hours a week to help my family. My husband and I are both Charleston County teachers with more than 30. with more than 30 years of experience each. As I know, as you know, we live in one of the top cities to visit in the country. With that comes a very high cost of living to match. Teachers' salaries are tens of thousands of dollars away from meeting the cost of living, let alone raising a family here, finding affordable housing, college expenses for our children, medical expenses, which are also out of reach for many of us in order to maintain healthy lives and healthy minds. Our professional counterparts are in business world, or even teachers in other states with lower levels of education and far less experience are making six figures. I urge you to pass the proposal to raise teachers' salaries so that it reflects our education level, our experience, and our devotion to students.
Thank you.
I've said for two. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Beth Hale. I've been a teacher librarian for 22 years and a CCSD parent for 11. I'm asking for your support in raising all teacher pay and the step increases for the salary schedule. I'm not here to convince you why we deserve the raise, but why we need it. In 2001, my husband and I were both first-year teachers, and we bought a house in September. That's impossible for new educators now. In fact, the exact same house my husband and I today could not buy with our current salaries. Now, even more, these increases are needed without the housing issue. I have my master's plus 30. I have my national board, and it's embarrassing to admit, but our family lives paycheck to paycheck, our financial reality with braces, healthcare, inflation now. Every month, that's what we face. I love teaching, and I work with some of the best human beings on this earth, but it feels like a mistake some days. Now, this pay increase would be life-changing, and my oldest daughter thinks she might get a car out of it. But what I'm thinking is, we won't have to refinance our house to help her go to college in three years.
Thank you. Next up is. We reached 30? Oh, okay. No, we haven't reached 30 because we had some that weren't here. They're 21.
You have nine more.
Yeah. Can I have Melissa Reese? Jeanetta Gregory. Jen McAdoo.
My name is Melissa Reese. I'm a 12-year educator, parent, and community member of CCSD. First, let me thank you for the tireless work that you have all done in your new role. I am here today to implore you to strongly consider moving the starting teacher pay scale to $58,000 and extending the step increase to year 40. This type of pay increase will attract new teachers and make it so teachers like me can stop working two jobs and have more time for our family, our community, and our students. As a teacher, it is a hard choice to make to stay in education if you have to work a second job just to be able to live and eat here in Charleston. So many other options exist for teachers to make more money. So let's make teaching so attractive that teachers come and they stay here in Charleston. If students are the heart of our work, then teachers are the backbone, and let's pay them their worth. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeanetta Gregory, the principal of James Island Elementary. I stand before you this afternoon to make some comments about EL, teacher retention, and teacher pay. The EL curriculum includes various reading strategies, writing and research opportunities, specific learning targets, participation techniques, discussion protocols. All of these are components of a great lesson plan. Too often, we are teachers complain about time spent completing tasks that are vital to the growth of our students. The EL curriculum is a game changer for teachers. It is a one-stop shop that has everything that teachers need to create a dynamic lesson. This type of curriculum can be a magnet used to attract teachers to our district, a curriculum that saves planning time and gives great results. As we embark upon the discussion of teacher compensation and retention, we must remember that our teachers not only deserve a pay increase, but they also deserve the right to use a great curriculum. Let's do right by our students by giving them an opportunity to soar like rockets and do right by our teachers by giving them the best in their pockets.
Thank you. Jen McAdoo. Megan Glass. Jennifer Wakefield. And Clinet Fur.
Megan Glass, English teacher at Wando High School. In May 2016, I graduated Clemson University. In 2020, I graduated Clemson again with my masters. I have spent nearly $160,000 on my education. I've invested in South Carolina and our students, and I'm asking you to invest in us, our teachers. People say, "I can't imagine doing what you do," and they are right. Most people have no idea what I do every day. They have no idea what it is like to say two hours after your contract requires almost every day without being paid for that time and then having to bring essays home to grade. They have no idea what it's like to have three jobs just so you can pay rent despite having a master's degree or looking up the menu before going out to dinner with friends to make sure you can afford a meal at the restaurant they picked, or having to buy a 1,000-square-foot townhouse because it falls under affordable workforce housing, but still needing a roommate to pay the mortgage, or counting down the days to your next paycheck, or not remembering the last time you even put $1 of that paycheck into savings, or spending your own money on school supplies or materials needed to make a lesson engaging, one that students enjoy, or spending your own money on a pair of cleats so your students can try out for football, or throwing a pizza party to reward your kids for their test scores.
Thank you.
They have no idea what it's like to pour your heart into children and not have enough time or money for yourself.
Thank you. Jennifer Wakefield. Clinet Fur. Dan Ryan. Mary Adigan. Kirk Lindgren. Lisa Ferrera.
I'm Mary Adigan. I thought that I wasn't going to be able to speak tonight, so I have been teaching for seven years. And so, just to piggyback off of what this young lady said, I have a three-year-old daughter. I can't afford daycare. I can't afford rent. I can't afford, I mean, with all those things combined. As a teacher, I have to work a second job. I have to be the department chair. I need to tutor after school. I need to do Saturday school. I have to do all of these things just to be able to survive, just to be able to live, just to be able to give to my family, to my husband. Yes, we have two incomes coming into my household, which a lot of people do not have, but I still struggle day to day, paycheck to paycheck, to save for this house that is just so far beyond my dream because my money is going in so many different directions. I still have to pay back my student loans, and I'm just trying to make it. Can't you understand?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Ferrara. I'm from the Charleston area, grew up here in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, and deeply concerned about teacher retention and recruitment. I have been a teacher at Wando High School for 18 years, but an educator in Tri-County for 23. I have a bachelor's degree and cannot afford to live in the community where I teach. I am recently divorced, supporting one of my two children who are, who's in college, and I cannot imagine what someone who's just out of college with a bachelor's degree, how they are going to be able to make ends meet and try to start out. We will continue to lose teachers to other careers because they're going to find something more lucrative elsewhere. Please consider paying educators a livable wage because the cost of living in the Charleston area in the last three years has skyrocketed, and our district will lose, continue to lose more of our current and future teachers if we don't do something today. Thank you to the Teacher Compensation Task Force and everybody for their time.
Thank you. Okay. Tiffany Paskey. Alice DeBrow. And Josephine Roth.
How many more are you reflecting? Because we're well over 30 minutes.
We are 26.
Okay.
Point of privilege. I really appreciate the fact that we have teachers and people who are signed up to speak. We don't have that many more people that we could listen to. Plus, the agenda was posted on the 9th, and then additional item was placed on the 10th. So I would like to see us hear everyone's comments for this evening.
We're going to stick with policy.
That needs to be a vote.
We're going to vote on extending policy to allow for all public comments. We were giving space for 30 people, but Dr. Temple's moving that we allow for everybody on the that signed up.
There's not that many more.
Well, we also have a 7 o'clock deadline.
Yeah, I'm for. Nay.
Yay.
Yeah.
Nay. Nay.
Yeah.
Yay. Yes. It carries.
Hello. My name is Tiffany Paskey. I am an ELA teacher, eighth-grade ELA teacher in the district. I'm also a parent, and I'm here to talk about teacher compensation. I don't, I didn't expect that I would get up here. So this is my little doodle from this morning as I was kind of going into some data. One of the eighth-grade ELA standards is to predict outcomes, and that's why I looked at this little data. And what this data is, is how many teacher vacancies are in Charleston County currently? How many teacher vacancies are in Berkeley County currently? And how many teacher vacancies are in Dorchester County currently? And there are less in Dorchester County. What I know from having lived in Charleston for 23 years is that the cost of living is very expensive, and everybody's moving either to Ravenel or to Goose Creek. So if I'm driving an hour and a half in from Goose Creek every day to come to my job in Charleston County for about $2,000 more a year, I'm probably going to quit that job and go to Dorchester County closer to my house because I don't think three hours of commute time is worth my $2,000 a year.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Josephine Ralph. I'm here to speak about teacher compensation. I'm an experienced educator with only five years in CCSD. However, when I first got my initial salary, I was so excited, and then I realized I was comparing it to my salary from 25 years ago when I began my career. This problem in Charleston, the cost of living, has become extraordinary. My mortgage, and I couldn't afford my house in my ranch neighborhood now. We bought it 20 years ago. My mortgage is now more than my paycheck, one of my two paychecks. I'm fortunate to have a spouse and a second income. Without him, I don't know how my daughter and I could survive here. I think the other issue with the paycheck, with pay, is our need to retain good teachers. I work in a school with a lot of youngins, if you will, and they can't afford it. They ought to live in Mount Pleasant because they're cute and fun, but they can't afford to live anywhere. And lots of us work second jobs. My paycheck is great when I do six hours of kaleidoscope a week, which means I'm working 48 hours a week. Thank you very much.
AJ Davis. Brittany Crowe. Cass Chabelli.
Good afternoon. My name is AJ Davis, and I work at Burke High School, a school that is near and dear to my heart. Here we are again. We spent the entire month of February not celebrating the wonderful historic significance of black people in this city, a city that saw 40% of the black population of America come through this port, but instead debating the merits of a curriculum that taught those kids, the ancestors of those slaves, how great they are. And tonight, we are literally sitting here watching teachers and staff pour their hearts out to you about the struggles of being a teacher and living in this city. And the best we can come up with is hiding behind policy decisions that you know don't reflect the realities of what we see in these schools. Is this the best that we can get from those we elected?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Crowe. I'm going to cry. I've been a teacher for nine years in Charleston County. When I rented my apartment, my mom is on the lease with me because I can't afford it. In 2022, I worked a total of 675 extra hours. That's 85 eight-hour workdays. Teaching for a full school year is 1,520 hours, per reference. I drive a car that probably won't break down because I can't afford a new one. We get paid twice a month, and I can't pay my rent with one of my paychecks, let alone my power bills to eat anything. I've been nominated Teacher of the Year three times, and I turned it down because I can't take on anything else that's not paying a bill. I promise you, you'll get a better me, and you'll get a better everyone if you'll pay us more. I'm tired. We're tired, and kids deserve better.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, good afternoon, good evening. Cass Chabelli, Mount Pleasant. Former New York City principal, 30 years. Present chair of the CCRP. And I'm here to deliver a very difficult message. First, I want to thank you, each of you, for taking on this mission. This is not easy to be elected because what you're seeing is your body politic, and what we are seeing are our elected officials. And I noticed in your very first go-around, you moved away from God. You made the mistake that they made in New York City so many years ago, and this is the holy city. This is Charleston. And my name is Cass Chabelli. I'm a kid from the Bronx, and I discovered Charleston. And what happened here on my first encounter with this esteemed board is a movement away from God. Go back. It was a critical moment. Don't be afraid of the atheists. Don't be afraid of the ACLU.
Thank you.
Don't fear anyone. Go to Jesus, and all this bickering will end.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you. I get Paul Bowers, Reverend. Paul Bowers, is it?
He spoke already.
He already spoke. Bonnie Cleveland. Merritt Watts.
Hi. Paul Bowers, parent of three students in this school district. I support the task force's proposal to start teachers at $58,000 a year with step increases at every year. It doesn't resolve all the structural impediments that are chasing our educators away, but it's a start, and I'll happily pay higher taxes to make it happen. I also want to address draft apology, policy GBEB, your proposed "Don't Say Gay, Don't Say Gender" gag order for teachers. It is censorship, plain and ugly. Here I will quote from a trans young man whose SAU board member Kelly raised a stink about during your candidacy last year, and the governor McMaster censored last year in CCSD. These are the words of Leo Lipton. "When I heard this article was banned, I felt scared, not just scared for the trans kids being denied education about their identities, but also for the kids who will grow up ignorant about an entire group of people who have been here forever and who are not going anywhere. Hiding the existence of trans people will not protect your kids." Hiding the existence of trans people will not protect your kids like you think it will because we are not a threat to them. We see what you're doing. We'll always fight back when you attack teachers and students.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Bonnie Cleveland, CCSD parent. I am really glad that you extended the comment time because you need to hear from the community. And Paul was the first one who was able to talk about this policy that's your don't say gay policy. So for those of you in the audience and watching at home and on the news later, what this board, this, the majority of this board, but not all of your board members want to do is to prevent teachers and other CCSD employees from using their preferred pronouns. What they want is to restrict people to only using pronouns consistent with their identification that they use when they applied for their job. And they also can't talk to students about their preferred pronouns or about gender. It's censorship and the censors are never on the right side of history. Never.
Hi, my name's Merritt Watts. I am a mom of two kids and just this morning registered my first four kindergarten at CCSD. So I'm so excited to be here. It's my first school board meeting. Mr. Kelly mentioned that he wanted transparency and feedback. So I figured I was in the right place because I have some feedback on the GBEB draft that was introduced last week. I personally think there is no better place than a school to learn about pronouns. They're an important part of any education. They're not that complicated. My four-year-old has a firm grasp on all the different options that you could use. It's amazing what kids can learn when you give them the chance. They're not born thinking the discriminatory ways that we might think that they should. And it is setting us back to avoid exposing our kids to different ways of being that they will experience out there in the world and setting Charleston back.
Thank you. The last four, Matthew Fuentes, Brandon Fish, Shelby Jeffron, and Colin Condon.
Hello, I want to thank you all for listening and for your service, board members. Above all, I want to thank my fellow teachers for coming out here and spilling your guts and letting everyone know how we live day to day. My name is Matthew Fuentes. I work at Lucy Beckham High School and I'm here for higher teacher pay. To be honest, I have a headache. I have a migraine from not being able to pay bills and questioning working in a profession that I love so very, very much. I have two master's degrees. I'm a PhD candidate with over ten years teaching and I can't make ends meet. I live week to week. The reason this room isn't filled because our teachers are out tutoring and working second and third jobs, not to mention lesson planning and decompressing and giving themselves the strength to walk in the building the next day. Our students suffer because of low teacher pay and no curriculum can solve that. On a more personal note, as a CCSD parent, my daughter, who has gone through three teachers this year because of LoPe, recently came to me and told me she wanted to be a teacher. What should I say to her? And the fact that I can't give her a real answer is a travesty. We need to treat teaching as a profession, not a side hustle. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. Good evening. My name is Brandon Fish. I'm the Director of Community Relations for the Charleston Jewish Federation. And I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the changes to policy GBEB. Our local federation and most of the organized Jewish world have been at the forefront of advocating for LGBTQ rights and safe spaces. A few of the reasons why we're opposed to this legislation. First, I know a lot of trans people and I know how important recognition of people's pronouns are. Trans kids suffer from an astronomical suicide rate and it's been shown that acknowledgement of their gender can help. Second, CCSD has a lot of issues to deal with and we really don't have time to deal with culture war issues, which are a distraction, frankly. Also, this policy is probably illegal under federal law and we'll certainly face legal challenges, which will cost our school district money. And lastly, I follow a lot of the legislation that the state has and I haven't seen any bill that has passed either chamber that would support any language like the one that's proposed in this policy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'm Colleen Condon. I'm the President of the Alliance for Full Acceptance and a West Ashley parent of a Charleston Charter for Math and Science alumni. AFFA supports the proposed teacher pay raise. We need teachers to earn decent incomes. We oppose the changes proposed in the GBEB employee conduct policy as such are clearly illegal. The board would be endangering federal education dollars by violating Title IX. Such a policy also violates Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, preventing discrimination based on sex, which legally already includes gender identity, despite what you might do tonight, as set forth clearly in the Supreme Court case, Bostock versus Clayton County. This policy should not move forward. And I thank God that a public school guidance counselor here in Charleston County was there for my child struggling with their gender identity in high school. And that needs to stay an option for all children. Thank you.
And Shelby Jeffron is not here. I just want to state that we had a hundred and eighty-four comments online. Teacher compensation was a hundred and fifty-nine. EL curriculum was fourteen. Prayer before meetings, two transgender teachings, two policy GBEB, four CCSD achievement gap, one. Bridge the gap curriculum, one, and miscellaneous, one.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. With the conclusion of public comments, we're gonna move on to item number three, student outcomes for the superintendent's report. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you very much, Ms. Wally. So I have three points to make tonight. So before we get into the PowerPoint, Maggie, just pull that down for a minute. So the first point is, last month, yeah, last month, we submitted two options for academic calendars for next year. There's been a lot of feedback that's come from the public. I just want to let the public know that we have taken that feedback, we're continuing to take that feedback and we will more than likely make some proposed modifications to at least one of the calendars to the board based on that feedback at the March twenty-seventh board meeting. So that's number one. Number two, I have someone on the Zoom that's going to address the board and the community. It's Dr. Carrie Wright. Dr. Carrie Wright was the superintendent for the state of Mississippi from two thousand fourteen till this past June. So for eight years there. So it's incredible. So what I've done since I've been in this role with my staff now, we've looked across the country and specifically in the southeast, trying to see where progress is being made on student achievement. And when we looked over in Mississippi, it was like incredible. When Dr. Wright arrived in two thousand fourteen, they were rated number fifty out of all fifty states on educational attainment. When she left last June, they had moved to thirty-fifth. Tremendous progress. If you take a look at the nation's report card, NATE, I can't remember what the acronym is, but the NATE assessment that's given to fourth graders across the country. In two thousand thirteen, the state of Mississippi was way below the national average. In two thousand nineteen, they were above the national average in mathematics and right at the national average in reading. So again, tremendous progress. So when we looked over in Mississippi, we actually reached out to Dr. Wright before she had resigned, not resigned, but retired, to see what she and her staff were doing across the state. And so we have adopted some of those strategies here in CCSD. And so what we've asked Dr. Wright to do, we have a contract with her. We asked her to come over and spend a couple of days here in Charleston, looking, going into schools, talking with teachers, talking with students, talking with teacher coaches, talking with principals, talking with district staff to give us her assessment on our strategies, what was working, where we need to make modifications. And so she's graciously agreed to join us via Zoom tonight to give us a report on her reviews last Wednesday and Thursday. Dr. Wright?
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. And it was also an absolute delight to tour your schools when I was here last week. I want to thank both Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Huggins because they had really reached out to me and said, we really want to pick your brain and would love to have you come and visit. So that's what I did. I came and spent two full days. I visited three different schools. I talked with the principals. I talked with teachers. I also spent a lot of time interviewing a number and variety of district and school staff and also have spent a lot of time in discussion with both Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Huggins. Prior to this, we've been talking several months, actually, in anticipation of this visit. So I want to try to just give you a high level. This is not every single thing, but these were themes that I was looking for during my interviews and during the time I spent in schools. So I hope that you find this helpful. I intend to circle back, obviously, with the superintendent and his staff to get into some details on things that I'm going to refer to later as opportunities for improvement. But the first thing that came through loud and clear in my interviews and in my tours is the leadership that's being provided at the district level by both Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Huggins. The need for consistency was stated several times by those that I talked with. In fact, I have, we had a lot of conversations around the need, what consistency provides is that lack of churn at the top. Because anytime you're in an organization, and for those of you that are in the audience that have run organizations, you know, every time the leadership turns, progress slows down. So that was one thing that came through. The focus is definitely on the science of reading. I don't think there's any doubt about that in the classrooms that I was in. It is research-based. It is the one that Mississippi, the implementation process that Mississippi used as well. And it's being used in many states. In fact, South Carolina has just looked at, they're looking at science of reading throughout the entire state. But I probably think there's well over thirty, thirty-five states now that are looking to legislate something around the science of reading. And this really was a key to our success in Mississippi. I got lots of positive feedback about the professional development that's being provided to teachers through not only the letters training, but also the training that was provided by leading educators and the ongoing assessment project. And I honestly say, and this is a strategy that I feel so strongly about, is building teacher and leader capacity. I think everybody wants to do the very best that they can. And I think if we could come alongside that as a district, or in my case as a state, and help build that capacity in teachers and leaders, then our students will only be the beneficiaries. And I also observed the implementation of the EL curriculum. And I can tell you that it is an incredibly rigorous curriculum. And I was absolutely more than impressed with the quality of the student work that I observed. What it's asking them to do in terms of critical thinking, in terms of writing, in terms of collaboration is absolutely amazing. And I can tell you that the staff that I talked to, the principal that I talked to, said, we really need to be consistent with the implementation of curriculum in our district. In fact, there was a lot of frustration that had been expressed by folks over the many changes to curriculum. And I think that if you want to see something done and done well, and I was in Mississippi for almost nine years, it's got to be a consistent implementation of what it is that you're trying to get accomplished. In this case, it's the EL curriculum. Also, the utilization of your coaches, both at the school and district level. This was also a key strategy of Mississippi's and I can't tell you enough about coaches. They are the backbone to getting the work done and working alongside teachers. And so hats off to those folks that I interviewed and I think they spoke eloquently about the importance of the role of coaches in classrooms. And also, last but not least, and sometimes you don't expect to hear this from staff, but establishing a clear vision and a strategic plan with very clear goals, people commented on that. And how, in fact, one person said, it's so nice to have that in front of us every single day. So the opportunities that I want to offer up, and I'll follow up, obviously, as I said, with Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Huggins, is the opportunity to implement this EL curriculum district-wide, I cannot say enough about. It is a consistent way of K-12 of getting something accomplished, particularly starting at the elementary level, along with, because it is research-based, it is aligned to the science of reading. And there's a lot to be said about giving it time for implementation to really take, to really take place. Heard a lot of interesting comments about the need to increase early childhood programming. So you're talking to somebody who has early childhood is near and dear to my heart. And I can tell you, it made a huge difference in Mississippi when we began to expand our early childhood programs. There's so much research that's being done now longitudinally about the power of high-quality early childhood programs. In fact, not only are children more likely to read on grade level by the end of grade three, they're more likely to graduate from high school, they're more likely to go to college, they're more likely to get and obtain a job and maintain that job. They're less likely to be involved with the police, they're less likely to be involved with drugs. And it all starts from when you start them at, well, I'd love to start them at threes. We started them at fours, but having that early childhood background is huge. I think we need to develop a management system for the EL implementation. One of the things that we talked about was that there's a lot of moving parts with the EL program. And I think there's a way that we can streamline that for teachers and make that ease of implementation for them. I do, I did hear a lot about examining ways to strengthen the special education program. I know in Mississippi, Students with Disabilities was the subgroup that really struggled the most. And that's not atypical. And so I think there's ways, I supervised special ed for ten years of my life. This is another very special place in my heart. And I think there's ways that we can look to implement that. People were calling to include more co-teaching, having more special education students in the general ed classroom and moving forward where that's concerned. The coaches were so popular, you now have a request on the table for math coaches. So I think your literacy coaches are doing an amazing job and so many of them are coaching in so many areas, but the need for additional math coaches came through. I know you've recently started the student data reviews. I got feedback from staff that they really want these to continue. It's a great way to focus on individual students and their needs and then a great way to monitor progress in schools. And the staff that I interviewed who attended those meetings said they were incredibly helpful, just being able to learn from other schools and how other schools are doing. And if they're making better progress than your own school, then how can we take some of the strategies that some schools are doing and move them into other schools? There was a request for additional professional development offering for administrators as well as teachers. That's something that's an easy fix and I can certainly sense the need for that. We also had a request to streamline some of the paperwork for administrators. And I think that there's a way that we can accomplish that as well. Having been a principal for a number of years and been an administrator for a number of years, I'm always looking for ways that we can streamline paperwork, which gives in principals time to be in classrooms and a meeting with teachers and really building the capacity of the teachers in their own building. And last but not least was a message around being consistent in messaging that's sent to both the district and school staff. This is not unusual. I know when I landed in Mississippi and started in that role, I was hearing some offices are saying one thing, other offices are saying another, and everybody is well-meaning, but sometimes the messaging isn't aligned. And so I think there's a strategy that we can employ behind that as well. But I've got to tell you, you've got some amazing staff across this, not only in schools, but in the district. Hardworking, focused, student-oriented, which is exactly what you want to hear. And not one of them said, let's stop doing something other than, let's stop changing things. As often, I think one of your speakers talked about that. So having consistency in leadership, consistency in implementation and consistency in schools where children are concerned can only make them stronger. And I'm looking forward to my continued consultation with the school district and with district staff and school staff. And I thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wright. Any questions on the board about the right?
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear what you had to say.
As I said, before I move on in my report, any questions from the school board about Dr. Wright?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Maggie, if you could put the PowerPoint back up. Thank you very much, Dr. Wright. So to wrap this up and this being the superintendent's report. And I have this report. and I have this report here because of the, the question of the continuation of like there of, of the EL curriculum. So I want to address that one more time, just reiterate my, uh, my support for the EL and my, my intentions on it. So, uh, this is, um, uh, the pillars that we operate under. I won't go through the details on that. I, I present this every time I present a slide. Uh, next slide, uh, we have three goals that have been in place for, um, quite some time now, going back to sometime in twenty, year twenty twenty-two. So several months, uh, one on literacy, and one on, uh, algebra in eighth grade for, for students, and one on college and career readiness. So I won't go through those in details either. That's a template, uh, slide, next slide, please. Uh, so these next three data.
Mr. Kennedy, real quick, can you turn off your camera on your computer? You have like two videos up here.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Too much Kennedy.
This is important stuff. But thank you. Uh, so anyway, uh, three data slides, three data slides, which you all seen before. And I always show these whenever I talk with people. So the first one shows, uh, the reading scores in this district going back to two thousand and six, uh, going into, uh, up to last year. And you can see that we have a huge gap at the very top on this, uh, graph. The line is, uh, the white students on, 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 for, uh, grades three to, three through eight on their reading levels. And for African-American students at the bottom on the blue line, uh, and you can see a tremendous gap there. I won't go into any more details on that. Uh, next slide, uh, just a different way to look at that gap. Uh, I mentioned a few minutes ago when I introduced Dr. Wright, that, uh, we look throughout the southeast and west working. Uh, the reading gap between African-American kids and white kids in Fairfax County, Virginia School District, the seventeen points, uh, seventeen percentage points, and there's, uh, a number of people in that community of Fairfax County that's really concerned about that gap of seventeen percentage points. Whereas here in Charleston, uh, the difference between that, uh, red, uh, bar on the left, which represents white students and the African-American students on the right, the, uh, the, uh, blue bar, that shows a gap of fifty-four points, so more than three times the, uh, the gap in, um, Fairfax County, Virginia. Um, next slide, please. And then the last, uh, data slide shows, uh, on average during that same time period for that line graph I had, uh, that, uh, eighty-two percent of African-American fifth-grade kids leave the fifth grade going into secondary schools, reading below grade level. Next slide. Um, so on the, the effectiveness of the EL curriculum, uh, this blue, this graph with these blue bars show, um, the implementation of EL beginning in August of twenty twenty-one for the acceleration schools, and whether it shows, and up in the right-hand corner, uh, that on average, uh, the, the growth that the kids have had using the I-Ready interim assessment, it's been eight-point-three, uh, points, eight-point-three points, uh, from August twenty-one up until, uh, this, uh, this winter. And the next slide, the same similar graph, but it shows the implementation of, uh, EL in non-acceleration schools beginning in, uh, January of last year, so January twenty twenty-two. And it shows a ten-point-nine percentage point, uh, point, uh, growth. Uh, I show these two slides, uh, we show these two slides and show that we have, we are making progress. And it looks, it look, it appears as though we're on track to make further progress with this, uh, curriculum. Next slide. So, uh, uh, as I wrap this up, uh, week before last, I, I sent a letter to a, all of districts, all of the districts, uh, kindergarten students. And I did a video also with ten students that's shown here. So I'm not, I'm not gonna do the video now. Now she'll go through the letter, so you can look at the video anytime. There's a link there. Uh, but in that, um, in that letter, in the video, I asked, uh, the, uh, the kindergarten students and their teachers three questions. Uh, ask the kindergarten student, what are your dreams when you, uh, leave the kindergarten and go into first grade? And then what are your dreams when, uh, when you leave, when you, when you become a big kid, i.e. you're a teenager? And then what are your dreams when you, uh, are an adult, you're grown up? And it's incredible. I've got, I've received hundreds, I mean, hundreds and hundreds, uh, responses from these kindergarteners. Um, and, uh, so when I had, they had the video, it was like, and I, I'll tell you, I was super nervous. I said, uh, to talk with, talk with kindergarten kids and, uh, but, uh, but I did go okay. And, uh, so, but, but the feedback that I got from them just really warmed my heart and just re-energized, uh, work that I'm doing. So, uh, I would encourage everybody to take a look at the video, and there'll be more, uh, more work coming from my staff and I, uh, on, uh, what we'll do with those, uh, dreams that they're telling us about. Uh, the next slide. So based on what I just said, on the, on, on the dreams of our kindergarteners, in this past August, August twenty twenty-two, we had three thousand four hundred and twenty-two kindergarten students enrolled in our school. Um, based on the data that I showed you in those earlier slides, if we maintain the same progress or lack thereof that we have for a decade and a half, decade and a half or two decades. Uh, so the blue, the blue arrow shows the number of kids that came into kindergarten, three thousand four hundred and twenty-two. The gold, uh, arrow shows that, uh, where those kids would be in the fifth grade, if we stay on the same tra, trajectory. And that means that, uh, little over fifty percent of those kids, only fifty-four percent, or little over fifty percent of those kids would be reading on grade level. And if you disaggregate those numbers by groups of race, then you would expect to see uh, only twenty percent of African-American kids five years from now reading on, uh, grade level. And then on the, the last, uh, hour here, the red hour shows the, uh, after these kindergarten kids have spent thirteen years in our system, and they graduate thirteen years later in the, in twenty thirty-five, this is the class of twenty thirty-five. What would they have to show for it? And so one-third of those students, if we stay on the same path, one-third of those students will graduate not college, not career-ready. And that's based on the, the data that we've experienced for the last twenty years. And then again, if you disaggregate those numbers, then the, the numbers look worse by, 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 uh, groups of race. Next slide. Um, so that, so yes, so there's, so there's, there's some controversial, uh, insensitive topics in, uh, in EL. I've told the board, uh, you've seen the letter that I, back on February tenth, that I sent to all principals, where we had a team. They took a look at that, those controversial items. Um, I sent a letter, given the autonomy to principals to remove those items, to, uh, substitute other materials for that, so they have that autonomy. Uh, the second bullet here, uh, in addition to the, uh, that action, I know there's lots of concerns in the community about the content. And so we have formed a, um, uh, a, a process where we are we've asking people in the community to engage with, with us in small group settings. I don't know how small they are, uh, Ms. Huggins can tell us, but we had over three hundred people respond, and so started, I think, this week, uh, I think Wednesday or Thursday. Tomorrow, tomorrow, we are going to have that engagement so that we can further understand from the community standpoint, what are the concerns about the content of the EL. And then as Dr. Wright said, she's given us feedback on how we might make, make adjustments on that. And the last slide, uh, the unintended consequences of, uh, of, uh, discontinuing EL. So I've already talked about the, uh, decline in student achievement. Dr. Wright talked about that. Uh, CCSD risk not to skip. So the, back in February, we talked about the accreditation that we have to go through, uh, next year. And that, when we went through it five years ago, we were told in writing that we were at risk of not being accredited going forward because we had a lack of a, a consistent curriculum uh, in, in, um, in reading across the district. And so they'll be looking at that when they come back in, uh, next year. Uh, the third bu, uh, bullet, bullet, uh, this, this idea of trying to switch curriculum midstream, uh, it's impossible to, um, uh, to meet the procurement, uh, uh, timelines to get a new curriculum in place, uh, by the, uh, by the time school starts next year. And I know that, I know in the, in the emotion here, at least the background emotion, it says that we can go into the warehouse. Now, from my understanding, uh, those curricular, curriculums, uh, the materials, yes, they were placed in, in the warehouse, but I, I'm not sure at all that they're, they are still there. Because we share those with other places in the world. Uh, teacher retention, uh, Dr. Wright again talked about, and then some of our principals talked about that the heavy lift to implement a curriculum, and if you start over, even the principals I talked to that tell me that their teachers have, some of their teachers have, have concerns about the viability and moving forward with, uh, uh, with the EL curriculum. When I asked the principals, those principals, are you saying that you, you think it's best to abandon that curriculum and start over? And they said, Mr. Kennedy, no, that is the worst thing that we could do. Um, lack of time for a proper teacher professional development, we'll take care of that. And then, um, excuse me, we have to start over. And then the last piece there, uh, is the, the, the investments that we have already made. So we've already spent ten million dollars, allocated ten million dollars. So we have to replace that, presumably we have to spend, you know, that amount again. And then, uh, the Palmetto, uh, uh, priority project schools, which the state of South Carolina demand that they use, uh, this curriculum. Uh, we have twenty-five, about forty-seven or forty-eight elementary schools that are in that category. And the state has paid for the curriculum for those twenty-five schools. And so, uh, uh, my assumption is that if we have to abandon this curriculum, the, the state's not going to pay for that, for that, for another, uh, set. So those are my, uh, points, uh, for my, my, uh, report tonight. So what questions do you have, anyone?
Madam Chair, are we allowed to ask questions?
I just said, what questions you have, yes, sir.
So we can ask questions. The, the superintendent on his report?
Question for the superintendent?
I sure do.
Please.
I, I love to see this report. This is the third time I've seen this, right? This is the third time we've presented this, right? And as I see the numbers, we went through this, and we went through this with you, how they started to go up even before EL came in. And since you opened the door for EL on this, um, I think everybody should read the motion, because I don't think there's any movement whatsoever to get rid of EL. I think there is the movement to have, like you said, and you told us that we could have options, that principals could have options. And that's what I ran on, was to give my principals options. I did not run on getting rid of EL. I think it's a great curriculum for the schools that are using it. But you told me that there were options. And I look at these scores, and we went through these scores. The scores were going up before EL was even implemented. So I get insulted sometimes when I start seeing this presentation three times. How many times am I going to see it?
Well, I can respond to that, Mr. Bubowski. Uh, my, my intent is to, to give the presentation every time the EL curriculum is on the, on the agenda. Uh, so the options that I've given principal, uh, is, uh, as I've stated, we've taken a look at the materials uh, and, uh, that, that are deemed to be controversial, and we're giving principals the options, option on how to deal with that. Uh, the, 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 uh, motion, the current motion for this evening, as I see it, uh, it, it says that it's going to give the authority not to principals, but to, uh, teachers to make decisions. And when, when we, in the line graph I showed, that, that you indicated, I've shown a number of times, is that, um, uh, when, when schools, when, 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 um, achievement was going up between two thousand and six and two thousand and twelve, we had a standard curriculum that, um, standard rather, uh, that, that we, the district could provide professional training, professional development for all of our teachers that were participating in that. If teachers currently have the option of selecting their own curriculum on the internet, whatever, then there's, it's impossible to provide the, the, the level of professional development that they need. It's just, it's just not possible.
Okay, let, I, I, can I speak? Just one more, because we need to move on. We have a lot to cover still.
Okay, I have a letter here from a professional, because we were told to let the professionals do their job, and the professionals were speaking. Well, a professional sent this email to me saying the EL curriculum was chosen by Charleston County with no input from the teachers. It is not meeting the students' needs regarding reading or writing. Teachers should not have to supplement developmentally appropriate writing and reading materials for our adopted curriculum. Much of the curriculum is also based on classroom protocols, is built with a lot of teacher talk, and each module focuses primarily on science. Since the modules are based around one subject over a couple of months, it does not hold student attention. Instead of being excited for reading time, the majority of the students are disengaged. It does not provide enough student engagement. Other than the decodable texts, which are part of the skills blocks portion of this curriculum, books are not in the children's hands. This is very important when you are teaching children how to read. The district recently announced that teachers will be required to complete letters training. The EL curriculum does not use research-based techniques to teach reading or writing. Letters training is focused on research-based techniques to teach reading and writing. It is clearly, it's clear and to the point. The children are using I-Ready reading as their technology-based curriculum and for their standards, standardized test scores. EL is not aligned with I-Ready. As teachers, we are going back to determine what standards are being missed so that we can have our students ready for the next grade in reading, writing, and phonics. I'm sure EL has some high points, but the children are not making the progress they should, even when teaching with fidelity. We hope our inputs help you make a thoughtful decision when discussing the EL curriculum, and you take our concerns into account. So you say EL is, um, successful, but I have several teachers here in the district that are saying that it's not. And
Can you forward those to us?
Yes, I surely can. I can give you a copy. And also, I have one teacher says I have taught early childhood reading for thirty-six.
Bailey, I'm sorry to catch you off, but let, let's, let's get through, and then we can go into the motion and discuss your concerns.
Okay.
As one that's got hands-on, um, experience with it. Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for, um, your, your report. We're gonna move on to item number four, under strategic education. I'm gonna start us off here before I hand it over to the liaison. Um, item A, Greg Mathis High School overview. We've all been presented with a very thorough um, presentation by Mr. Barrowey. Um, and I really appreciate him taking the time to be so thorough in addressing our concerns regarding Greg Mathis. Um, Mr. Barrowey, did the district reach a conclusion?
So as you pointed out, we did provide a significant amount of information that you all asked for, mission, vision, strategic plan, enrollment data, teacher data, um, SIR funding, et cetera, et cetera. The real premise was to take a close look at the space available within the school district. Uh, we did take a look at all high schools and middle schools. We started out by looking at schools that had, uh, less than seventy percent building capacity, because the real number of usage to share a school is program capacity. How is a school actually being used each and every given year? And we got our principals' assessments back in November. Uh, it's a classroom-by-classroom review with teachers assigned, classes assigned, numbers of students assigned. And through that analysis, we only found, uh, one school that had nine classrooms, uh, available, not assigned to a core teacher, a sped teacher, an ESOL teacher. Of those nine classrooms, three of those were being used for other purposes. So the highest or mo, most available school only had that many classrooms. The next closest was six. Uh, in Greg Mathis's request, in July, they asked for twenty-four classrooms and labs. Uh, they dropped that down to eleven classrooms and labs in December of last year. Uh, we don't come close to that, uh, with the number of classrooms that we're using now without compacting, moving our kids around in the schools that are available now. We went to Greg Mathis with a couple of other options. Uh, there is a school in Hollywood, uh, that is not being utilized right now, C.C. Blaney. Uh, they believe that that distance out there is too great for student transportation. And we also looked at the potential for after-hours use of our schools, adjusting their schedules. Again, they didn't think that that option was, uh, feasible for them. So at this point, we don't have a, a suitable solution for them within our schools. Uh, but we did go through a lot of rigor to get to that conclusion.
Thank you. So now we'll move it on to, Ms., we should have discussion or opportunity to ask questions after each presentation.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Barrowey, a question I have is because this has been going on for so long, um, and, uh, you know, they get sort of the same response every time they come. Is there any forecast plans for how they can be helped in the future?
No, ma'am, unfortunately, there's not.
Even with, so with the schools, you know, with the number of schools being built and sort of swing spaces, you know, becoming available, is, has there, you know, I, I know you said there's not, but have you done a, conducted a, you know, sort of study of five years out, what's going to happen? I'm just wondering if we can give them any sort of answer, because we know that they can't really afford, um, you know, the rent, or at the current place, or serve more students. Uh, and we know that given the climate that we're in right now, the types of students that they serve, the numbers are growing.
So they, they do have fifty-four students right now. The numbers actually decreased for their enrollment over the years. Uh, obviously, we would hope that that would increase.
And they have a plan to increase it.
Yes, ma'am. So looking ahead five years, we've looked at a number of the schools that we have, and at this point, there isn't anything on the horizon, but that analysis is not yet complete. There are a number of spaces that will be potentially freed up, uh, in the out-years. That, again, that analysis hasn't been completed across the entire district five years out.
Gotcha. And I understand that there's going to be, um, obviously, you know, changing demands for our district, but just would love to keep that, uh, front of mind, because I know the goal is, if there are more students to serve, you know, that they be allowed to serve them. Which brings me to the question that I was going to ask. Um, will you be following up with Greg Mathis, um, as things evolve?
Certainly. And, and we, we have, uh, carried requests for a number of our charter schools over the years. Uh, we did make We did make Percy available for sale this past year. Obviously, as you pointed out, Ms. Waters, Greg Mathis's financial situation didn't warrant, I believe, warrant them putting in a bid for that property. But we have other charters that are looking for space. We try to treat them fairly, offer to all of them when the opportunity is available, as we've done with C.C. Blaney. That space had been available for all charter school, all of our charter schools up until this point. So we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Does, my quickly, um, I actually like the option of after-hours. What was the reason that they didn't like that option?
You all want to address that or you want me to?
Thank you for that, Ms. Tamar Roberson. When we, when we talked to the principal, she indicated that there were lots of competing after-school commitments for families and for students. And so despite the multiple options we discussed, none seemed to meet her needs and the needs of the school.
And if I can, I appreciate that. One, I can add on to that was I think she also indicated that her teacher force would have had issues working different hours as well.
Exactly. Noting that she has teachers with students in CCSD schools who'd be, as you can imagine, on the eight-thirty. Thank you. Thank you again.
I just want to make a comment. As I read through the presentation, thank you for the thorough report. I really do appreciate the hard work and commitment of the staff to serve their students academic and special needs and behavioral problems. I think the school is making a contribution to reducing the school-to-prison pipeline. I, I would like to suggest, however, to the district that we need to look at a broader discussion and evaluation of all of our alternative programs being within the districts currently offered within the district's high schools and throughout the district in schools like Greg Mathis, Septima Clark, and the C.A. Academy. We know, we need to know more about best practices in working with the student population, what's working, identify better ways of serving this population of students, and, and also consider increasing access of these students to our career and technology programs.
Did anybody else have anything? Okay. With that, we'll, thank you, Mr. Barrowey, Ms. Huggins. We'll move on to item four B and I will turn it over to the liaison for Strategic Ed.
Thank you.
Pull your microphone where-
I would like to put forth this motion tonight to maintain and change their current EL choices for the remainder of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year to allow the eleven acceleration schools to continue with EL using discretion per the February tenth letter from Mr. Kennedy to principals. Other schools currently using EL may continue with it as a resource, but teachers will have the flexibility to use other previously-used resources and curriculums where they deem necessary to teach South Carolina standards. And the reason being that I put forth this motion was because of the many questions and concerns from teachers, parents, and community members about the EL curriculum. Where it may be working for other schools in the district, it's not working for everyone. And I believe that these teachers, the professionals who brought forth their concerns about this curriculum should be heard. And they will be heard via these round tables across the district for the next few weeks. But I believe that we as a board need to take some type of action on this to help the other teachers in the district who don't necessarily agree with this curriculum implementation. And a couple of questions that I would like to ask as we open this up for discussion is, is this EL curriculum state board approved for all schools in South Carolina or just approved for the priority schools? Mr. Kennedy?
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure what I understand what's approved across all schools. But I can't imagine that the South Carolina Department of Education would take a curriculum and apply it to, in Charleston case, more than half of our elementary schools and, and say it's, it's inadequate for the remaining schools.
So what you're saying is that it's only, it was only authorized for the priority schools?
No, what I'm saying is that I can, first, two points. One, it's hard for me to believe that, that the state would select a curriculum and let it be implemented in a great percentage of our schools and not agree that it can be used elsewhere. What, what the state did with the Palmetto Priority Project Schools, they paid for the curriculum for those twenty-five schools, for our twenty-five schools, and they do that across the state. So they paid for that. They didn't pay for the ones that were not a part of that category of a Palmetto Priority Project Schools. And so we paid for the, for that subset of schools that were not a part of that state designation.
Okay, so in essence, that CCSD request and obtain a waiver allowing CCSD to implement this curriculum in all schools across Charleston County School District?
Well, there was no need to, to apply for a waiver, Ms. Bailey. I mean, it's, it's, it's a state-approved curriculum, so we, so the team that, that selected that, you know, is based on what was already approved by the state.
So in all actuality, this is not, and this is an option for the other schools across the district that are not priority schools or Palmetto schools.
Of course, it, it is an option, it's an option that, that the curriculum selection team selected. So it's an option that was, that was selected.
Okay, so therefore, with this motion being put in place, other schools can choose to go back to the curriculum that they had prior to this that was working? Or do they have to maintain?
No, ma'am, they can, they are not allowed to go. For, for my position, they are not allowed to go back because what it does then, it gives authority to teachers, as I understand the, the motion, to make their own selections. And I've, and just elaborately a bit, I mean, since I've been an adult out of college, I worked in a lot, a lot of large, complex organizations. I've never seen in any organization I've worked in where the, where the strategy of the organization is determined by the level of what we're talking about here, in, in this case, teachers. I mean, when I was in the military, I mean, I was a second lieutenant doing military stuff. I didn't develop strategy yet, you know, I just implemented what the higher-ups said we need to implement. And that's what we have here.
Okay, so when a kindergarten teacher says that the scripted text and strict, strict format are unrealistic for five-year-olds, the phonics part of the program is weak and confusing. I've spent hours and hours of this school year trying to figure it out, only to become frustrated. And they ask, please give teachers a curriculum that is child- and teacher-friendly. If teachers and students are engaged in the reading curriculum, test scores will rise. If they are not, we will continue to spiral downward. So this curriculum is not working all across the district like we're being told.
So, so my last comment on it then is this. I, we reached out to Dr. Wright from Mississippi to ask her to come over and give us some validation of what we were doing right, some suggestions on what we might do different. She indicated that, on the presentation tonight, that this implementation of this curriculum is, is, you know, is a heavy lift. Maybe not the words that she used. And that, that we, she's going to give us, the district, some, some ideas, some strategies on how we can make it easier on teachers. And so we're, we're going to accept those recommendations and implement those recommendations. So we have, with thirty-five hundred teachers across the district, certainly, each teach, every teacher's not going to be in agreement with every, every strategy that the central office rolls out.
So when another teacher says there are so many major foundational skills in reading that are missing from this curriculum, standards are not being taught sufficiently or to the degree that students can master the materials, and writing is not being taught at all. And when they state, I want to be clear, my opinion of EL has nothing to do with any perceived controversial, controversial issues. My concerns are directly related to what students need in classrooms to become readers. For the first time in my career, I do not feel that my students are learning to love reading, nor do I feel that they are being equipped to be as successful as they could be. So you're telling me that this teacher's comments and several others that have stated this are invalid?
You can all read emails.
Point of, point of order. Are we going to run the clock because we typically get two minutes? And this has been pretty extensive.
We can all read.
So let me make my last comment on this, my last comment. Now, I said a minute ago, make my last comment, so this is my, my last comment. I recognize two things. One, that this curriculum is working for a lot of kids and I, and we should continue that. I recognize, two, that there are some challenges that have been pointed out to us via email from teachers, from community members, and from Dr. Wright, who has done the, no one in, in the country has done what she's done with, with student achievement. And we are going to address those concerns. So my intent is to stay to course with the EL curriculum and address the concerns of all constituents that are saying that we have the various problems which we do. So we will do that.
I have a question on this motion. It's actually for either Mr. Kennedy or Ms. Huggins or Miss- Oh, we didn't get it? Okay, well, can, so are we open for questions or discussion or do we need to make a motion?
We're open for questions and discussion.
So you're opening a second? We need a second to the motion so that we can open it up for discussion? Do you have a second?
Yeah, motion first.
Uh, she read the motion.
She read it.
Do you need her to read it again?
No.
Second. Okay, so we have a second. Given that this does give the opportunity, the authority to change classroom practice at the teacher level, how would the district hold accountability measures? And how would you put accountability measures in place to ensure each class was actually supporting student growth?
So you guys going to answer that? No, so, so let me answer that. So from my perspective, and certainly Ms. Waters, the academic folks can weigh in. But from my perspective, there, there's accountability cannot be put in place in a structure like that. Dr. Wright talked about these SDRs, the Student Data Review Process, that we just implemented last week, where we asked principals to come in with their data, talk about what challenges they have, what support they need from central office. And so we can, we can make adjustments. If each teacher, and like I said, we have about thirty-five hundred teachers. I don't know how many elementary and middle school teachers. Bill, twenty-eight hundred?
Fifteen hundred eighty-five elementary school teachers, five hundred and thirty-seven middle school teachers.
Okay, so two thousand, little over two thousand, twenty-one hundred teachers that are responsible for implementing the EL curriculum. There's not a possibility of putting in a, a system of accountability at, when, when over two thousand individual people have control of what we do with strategy in the district. So I'm sorry, so Michelle, Anita?
Thank you. That, that among a short list of other concerns that the motion brings to the surface. And so I'm not one hundred percent sure what other previously-used resources we would be supporting as a curriculum and instruction division. The last time the State Department adopted a curriculum, it was two thousand twelve. So you can imagine, after eleven years, those resources are, they're outdated one. They're not available for use two. And so I, I'm not clear on what you, what resources we're referring to. When we had open court previously, it was only the phonics component. So we've never had a comprehensive, full complement open court. When we had open court in Journeys, that was in two thousand twelve, we no longer have those resources available. So I'm unsure where we stand with supporting a hodgepodge type of curricular infrastructure.
I think that's perfect, Ms. Simmons. It is also challenging to think about those resources being aligned with the science of reading. They were more aligned with a balanced literacy approach, to which you heard Dr. Wright speak a little earlier.
And just, given that the minute and forty seconds was my time, I want to ask another question. When it comes to the accreditation issue that we were talking about, was the fact that we didn't have universal curriculum a piece of that accreditation study?
Yes, ma'am, that was the feedback that we received from Advanced Ed at the time of their visit. Yes, ma'am.
So would a change of this magnitude impact our accreditation moving forward?
It could, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, did you have anything else? I would, at this time, and with, unless trustee Bailey has an objection, I would like to move to postpone this motion until the next Cal meeting, at which time we will have had our round tables and gathered more information. Can we vote on that?
Point it for it.
This is exactly what we asked at the beginning of the meeting.
Not exactly, but-
To remove it and postpone. We've been doing this over and over and it's so frustrating now we're not getting anything done. We just sat here and heard this entire spiel about EL and now you want to postpone it.
Well, now you're taking up more time. So let's, let's move forward with the motion.
Okay.
postpone it.
You're wasting time.
Well, I, I'd like to say something to this point. I don't believe that we wasted time because of the simple fact that we have educators across this district that voices were not heard in the past couple of meetings that we have had. And the people that wanted to speak out against EL did not have the opportunity to be present in the room to speak out. And I, I believe that we need to have the ability to agree to disagree without people being made fun of or told to shut up, sit down, be quiet.
I, I agree. Sorry. No.
We are about to have focus groups.
We're not, we're not doing that. Let's come back to order. So I agree with you that there are a lot of voices that have not been heard, which is why I'm moving to postpone it until after we have our round tables. And then we can come back to, we clearly have a discussion that needs to be had. We have only heard one side of the issue. The district has not addressed the many, many controversies surrounding EL. So we need a second.
We have sat through two meetings where we have, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm going to call order.
Well, she has two minutes.
I have two minutes.
There's a-
You're eating up my time, Leah. We have had two sessions where we have listened to parents, teachers, principals. We've had a session tonight where we have heard the number of emails that we have received that are contradictory of EL is miniscule compared to the body of, of information that we have received through the written comments that have come through the public testimony and this. Our emails are not public information and they're not showing that, whatever you all are talking about is not showing up in the public record. Now, we need to put this to rest. Our principals worked, I'm sure, confident in consultation with their teachers about trying to determine what to do with implementing EL curriculum. I have personally visited over fifteen classes where I have seen outstanding student work. I have talked with teachers who have addressed how they are dealing with, with the issues, making positive suggestions, and they are willing to move forward. We, we need to help those teachers who are struggling, but we cannot throw out the baby with the bathwater right now.
More to the point, we've only heard the positive.
Ms. Watley?
You're not listening.
Mr. Kelly?
If you would be willing to withdraw your motion, I have a, an idea that, that I'd like to present to the board that, that I think might, might satisfy both sides of this. I actually agree, I don't want to sit through this again. I, I think there's about a hundred thousand residents that would agree with that thought process. So one of the speakers we heard tonight was Mr. Antonelli. He was a principal. And he was the only speaker I've heard over the last two months who said good and bad about yell, which-
I agree.
So my proposal would be this, if you're willing to withdraw your motion, I would like to make a motion because the Cal meeting, we can't take action, that we would add to the board meeting upcoming to have Mr. Antonelli head up a focus group because he is a teacher, he's the expert, to look at what parts of EL are and are not working.
They are already doing that.
What, I believe that's what trustee Bailey was prepared to do after the round table is what I'm saying though, where we've actually heard from members of the community.
The round tables are there.
Then we could, then we could have the, the summaries of those.
Totally your call. You've got the motion on the table, on the floor.
So what are you proposing to move to do? To, to just hear from one?
No, most certainly not. But to have Mr. Antonelli head up a task force to look at what parts of EL are working and what parts would need to be removed to make it appropriate. and what parts would need to be removed to make it appropriate for the ages that is being taught, for the ages of the students.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, so I hear what you're saying, Mr. Kelly. I think we spent a good bit of time in this room back in January talking about board authority, board policies, and what authority of the superintendent, where that lies. The assignment of tasks to staff is a... That authority rests with me. So as opposed to individual board members or the board as a whole directing staff.
So then I would amend our motion to direct our employee to put Mr. Antonelli at the chair of a committee for that. Because at the end of the day, this... Well, at the end of the day, the superintendent works for the board, and I manage people all day long, 50-something hours a week, and I get to tell my employees what they do and don't do.
Well, there's also the unresolved issue of not hearing the issues that people have with EL and why it's so controversial.
I think, I think, I think, I think I've already said tonight, how many, how many listening sessions, sessions do we have, Ms. Huggins?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay.
I certainly appreciate the dialogue, but an overwhelming response from both teachers and community members to participate, well over 300. They start tomorrow. You're invited to attend all of them. We hope you will. Because of our desire to genuinely hear the concerns of teachers and community members, they're limited to 20 participants in each circle. We've doubled the number of circles, doubled the number of sessions, so that we can hear everyone who signed up to speak. I think that we... Mr. Kelly, I appreciate your point. Ms. Nichols and members of her team led a process whereby the curriculum was reviewed, and we made a list of all the sensitive materials and provided some options.
I'll interject. It was incomplete.
Ms. Nichols, would you like... Ms. Nichols, would you like...
I mean, the list of sensitive and controversial materials was incomplete.
What would you take out?
That's what I want to have the discussion about.
No, you said it's incomplete. What would you take out of it?
We did have a group of teachers that came, got together. We met for, we went four times in person, and then they went out and worked groups, and they reviewed materials and put it on a... And we shared it back together. So is it possible that they did not catch everything? Yes, I'm sure it is, but it's as complete as the folks that were in the group.
And I think it's important to note that, Mr. Kennedy, we met, actually started with the student data reviews. Dr. Wright spoke about them earlier. And we started with feeder patterns, District One and Two, just this week. So we heard from a large majority of our principals, or all of our principals east of the Cooper. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Antonelli was part of that. And some of the concerns that they have faced and their constituents have expressed were raised. And one of those was what Dr. Wright shared. Pushback concerns from teachers that the resources are overwhelming, and they need more help consolidating and putting together. And Ms. Simmons and I have talked about a process for that. We've also given the flexibility to remove materials that teachers and principals find controversial and where there were concerns, particularly in some of our North Mount Pleasant schools about rigor. We suggested that teachers have that authority. They have that autonomy. To my right are some of the best English teachers in the district. I happen to know them since I'm a recovering English teacher myself. And they know that they have the ability to augment that curriculum with materials that they feel their students need. Perhaps we need to do more clarity and provide more clarity around communicating that. And I'll accept that responsibility and suggest that maybe we haven't done that as well as we could. But it's something that we certainly can do moving forward.
Mr. Grabowski?
Just to take it a step further, since you met with all the District One and District Two principals, the general reaction was that most of the, all the principals in District One and Two were in favor of using EL.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Grabowski, and for seeking to understand first. The principals in our District One and District Two schools, from St. James Santee up to Mount Pleasant Academy, had a really thoughtful discussion with Mr. Kennedy. The response is most, most of the principals, some of the principals in the group, expressed concerns with rigor, more so than sensitive materials. And we addressed that with the concessions that we thought they already knew they had. But they all did agree, Mr. Grabowski, in full honesty and transparency, as Mr. Kennedy suggested earlier, that continuing with EL was better than starting all over with a brand-new curriculum. In fact, they expressed a degree of frustration that it would create teachers and a teacher, among teachers and a teacher shortage. They were fearful of losing teachers if we shifted to another curriculum again.
So if I may respond to that...
Please.
And again, I want to be clear with why I'm asking what I'm asking or suggesting what I am.
Sure.
And, Mr. Kennedy, I haven't stated this because I frankly, I respect you as a person, as a man. And so, but I'd like to tell you a quote from one of the emails that I heard from a principal. And it was, again, not my words, but it was something to the effect of, Dawn is lying to you. These are not optional. He's telling you that I have the option. I do not. So that was, and that sentiment was not, and again, I'm not calling you a liar, sir, so I want to be clear. That's just what I was told. So what I'm trying to seek here is a, shall we say, unbiased third party who still qualifies as an expert, and as much as any of us can be, as an educator and a principal. So again, yeah.
And I accept, I accept that statement. And I would ask, the memo that I sent to all principals K through eight on February 10th, have you all seen that letter? I wasn't ambiguous about what my statements were. Now, I don't know what interpretations were taken from that, but I didn't send that to teachers I sent it to. So I don't know who the email's from, you know, what, you know, if it's a teacher or whatever. But I sent those to principals. So I don't, I can't address how teachers might respond to my offer, not offer, but my statement that there's autonomy. And that, 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 that level of autonomy that I offered, that I gave was not to teachers. It was to principals.
So, so just so that I'm very clear, and I'm certain that this principal is listening tonight, your direction to your staff is that principals may opt in and also may opt out of EL?
No, 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 sir. No, sir. Again, if you will look, read my letter, my memo rather, to principals on this question of autonomy. It was explicitly and exclusively on the materials that were reviewed that Ms. Nichols just talked about, whether that's a complete list or not, we assume that it is, of the controversial material. So the memo says that we have, we understand that there's controversial materials that have been brought up in the EL. We listed those as an attachment to the memo. We listed those. And so the level of autonomy was that principals had, along with their staff, could opt out of any of those, those materials that had been deemed controversial and not even, not use them or replace them with some other material.
Mr. Kennedy, may I, Mr. Kelly, maybe to offer a little more information and clarity around that. Originally, all schools had the opportunity, except those who were given a directive from the state, to opt in. So, Ms. Simmons, please do correct me if I'm incorrect, but...
That was the context of the conversation.
Yes. Originally, when we began to adopt this curriculum, like Ms. Simmons said, we, the last time South Carolina's done a textbook adoption was 2012. And so we've worked after accreditation issues and after some of the issues in some of our higher-needs schools to adopt a curriculum. Other schools had at that time the ability to opt in to the use of resources and curriculum. And all of our schools, except for six, did so. At this point, we've spent a considerable amount of funding to purchase these resources. And so the understanding is that schools are using EL and will continue to use EL district-wide with the, again, with the shared understanding that we respect teachers and their knowledge and their best practice. And we respect principals to lead PLC meetings and to understand what students and teachers need inside of their classrooms in regards to curriculum. So if those resources need to be supplemented or changed in any way, we've given that autonomy to them.
I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Ms. McKenna?
I think it would behoove us timewise and fairness-wise to let the listening be heard and analyzed and move this forward to the next Cal meeting, as you suggested. And let's listen.
So let's then go forward with the votes.
Excuse me, I would like to use my two minutes. So let me speak to my constituents of District Eight. My apology to you. I asked for this when we first started. But I guess it doesn't matter unless it comes from their voice. We've wasted a lot of time. Please understand, we are not a system of schools. We are a school system. And we don't hodgepodge curriculum. No, no district has ever put any curriculum out front, and everyone likes the curriculum. You were asked to send all adverse comments to the CAO and the deputy. But obviously, you can, you chose to keep them so that you can use it for this motion. Send all of your concerns to the deputy and the CAO so that we can move on. We don't use things that come to us as a way to circumvent the system. We have to stop this. We absolutely have to stop. And let me use my last 53 minutes to say to general counsel, please establish the quorum. I've never been on an executive committee where you're, you cut off board members before you go around to see if anyone else has something to say. You don't cut off a discussion in a committee of the whole. Maybe you all have an opportunity to get together and speak, but we don't. This is the committee of the whole where we discuss to see what's going to move on to the board. If you decide at your pleasure, when you're going to close out the discussion, then why have the Cal? The five of you all should just meet. Thank you. I'll yield my last eight seconds.
Okay, we're gonna continue on. Ms. McKenna, second the motion. Let's go forward with the vote. I'd like to call the room to order. Security. Okay, we're gonna move forward with the vote. The motion is to postpone the item 4B until the next Cal meeting, so that we have the opportunity to gather the information from the listening circles. And the difference is, because this discussion is important, because other voices were not heard during the presentations, so... To postpone until the following Cal?
To have the opportunity to gather the information from the listeners.
Yes, ma'am. It's motion by myself and then seconded by Ms. McKenna. Until everybody gets heard. Yes, sir.
Where were they? Where were they?
Yeah. Okay.
The voters that are funded by the law for liberty are parties that beat state class news.
Wow.
And so, surprise, surprise. Go north or south.
The security's not shutting down. Okay, look at the box and see if your vote is accurately portrayed. And with that, the motion carries. Item 4B will be moved forward to the following Cal. And now we'll turn it over to Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. Dr. Davis, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will come forth with textbook recommendations.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Superintendent Kennedy. I bring to you tonight the recommendation for two textbook selections. The first one starts with biology, textbook selection recommendation for teachers of high school biology, Biology II, AP Biology. In accordance with the state law, the State Board of Education has a responsibility and duty to approve recommended instruction materials used for instruction in public schools in South Carolina. Schools may use state funding to select from the state board-approved list, which these books are on. And so how we carry that process out is panels made up of teachers and school staff and were a part of this textbook selection process. So the textbooks that we'll bring before you are Biology I, again, Biology II, and AP Biology. So our process in CCSD included teachers reviewing the process. There were times for parents to review it. And we took the recommendation that was made to our district instructional staff for science. And the books that we'll bring into you for recommendations tonight are Biology I, Inspire Biology by McGraw-Hill Education, Biology II, Experienced Biology, South Carolina, Miller and Levon, and for advanced placement Biology, Campbell Biology, the 12th Edition. And all of these cover the next-generation science standards, where we actually introduce science based off of phenomena. So it is the recommendation of my team and the district staff that we adopt these textbooks for science, Biology I, Biology II, AP Biology, as recommended by the district staff.
I move we accept these books. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? The motion should reflect to move the item to the board meeting. Is there any further discussion? Okay, see if your vote is accurately portrayed. And with that, the motion carries to move it to the regular board meeting. Are you also doing 4D?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item for adoption is for AP European History. We followed a similar process as we did for science, where a committee of teachers, a task force, the teachers' work was convened. There was public reviews, both at the school level. We had it here at the district level as well. And at the end of that review process, the textbook that was recommended by the committee, the task force, was AP European History. The title of that book is The National Geographic Learning, Sin Gaze, Western Civilization Since 1300 AP Edition. Edition. And so we chose that book, the task force chose that book because of its alignment to the 2020 Social Studies Science, Social Studies Standards and AP Course Guide and it follows suit for college board. So it is the recommendation of the task force and the district administration that we accept the recommendation by the task force as presented.
Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Please see if your vote is accurately depicted. And with that, the motion carries. So we will move on to-
Thank you.
Item 4E.
Point of clarification. Ms. Watley, are you running the Strategic Education Section or the Strategic Education Chair?
It's actually supposed to be the liaison.
Hey, listen, we're moving on to the next section. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. Oh, monitoring report.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. This next item is the first in our series of monitoring sessions to review with you data relevant to the board's goals and goal rails. And Dr. Temple was instrumental in getting this schedule set up, and this is the first item related to board goal one literacy. And I think Mrs. Roberts, who's our Executive Director of Assessment and Evaluation, and Mrs. Simmons, our Chief Academic Officer, is going to take over from here. Thank you, ladies.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about our monitoring report. So as outlined in Board Goals Monitoring Calendar, CCSD's staff is directed to report on interim goals three times a year. As such, interim goal 1.1 is scheduled for this March reporting cycle. Interim goal 1.1 relates to literacy. This interim goal is focused on our Black and Hispanic pre-K four students scoring Tier One on my IGDS in both rhyming and sound ID. Our goal is to increase from 26.9% in April of 2022 to 50.2% in April of 2025. Our spring 2023 on-track target is set at 34.7%. So just a little for your context, my IGDS, the measure that we used in this interim goal, is given to our pre-K four students three times a year to assess their individual growth and development in early literacy, early numeracy, and social emotional skills. Teachers and leaders use the data from this assessment to intervene early and to provide targeted support that's needed for our students to be successful in kindergarten. So we've provided three years of data, including this current school year. As you can see, while we saw declines last year in winter and spring with our Black and Hispanic students meeting Tier One on both rhyming and sound ID subtests, we do see a slight increase in winter of this year, signifying some progress. So when we look at other related data, and in this case, how our Black and Hispanic students are performing on other literacy subtests, we do see increases in students achieving Tier One status in all subtests in this particular student group. We see these same increases across all literacy subtests for our students overall as well.
So I'll bring this really brief reporting to summation by speaking a bit, lifting up some of our next steps. And so we do believe in investing in our earliest learners. And to that end, we will continue to focus on expanding access. Just this winter, we added an additional 4K class in District Two, also added a infant toddler class in District 23. And so we are ripe to open a new early learning center in D3, the James Allen Community. In a couple of years, we will fashion that center after the success of Mary Ford's Early Learning Center. And so we're really excited about the potential to maximize all of our efforts in a significant way for our early childhood population. I won't belabor every bullet. You have this information for your review, but a few things we want to call out, like we have with our kindergarten through eighth grade curricula, we believe in shoring up our curriculum for our preschool students via creative curriculum. Likewise, parallel to the letters implementation for grades K through three, system-wide, we also implement the pre-K letters implementation as well for our earliest learners. We believe with this continuum of support and services for our early learners, we will see the results of all grade, all students on grade level by fifth grade in 2027. And so this is the first of a series of monitoring reports that you will have based on the big goals, the audacious goals that we have before us. And we thank you for considering this information.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Any questions or concerns about this? Okay, we will move-
I have one question, Ms. Simmons. What do you attribute to the increase in scores specific to early learning?
Several things. There's usually no one factor or variable that impacts student learning, but we do believe in a guaranteed and viable curriculum, i.e. the conversation, the enduring conversation around EL. And so for several years, we have been implementing creative curriculum, a companion program to creative curriculum integrities, where we focus on phonics, phonological awareness. We believe if students or scholars have a really solid foundation in early literacy skills, that takes the form of letter sound recognition. When our scholars are adept at rhyming, the propensity for being a solid reader increases. And so those worthwhile programs allow for that kind of focus. And so I would contribute that. Kim Foxworth is here. You've heard from Ms. Foxworth on more than one occasion. She has done a stellar job at shoring up the expertise level of our teacher force, particularly at Head Start. The design of Head Start isn't typical of having certified teachers. We believe that that training, that expertise for our scholars is invaluable. And so we could probably talk for the rest of the night about the impacts, the inputs that allow us to get at results. We're not satisfied. We're not content. We're not pleased, but we are trending in the right direction with early learning, with the focus that Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Huggins, and Ms. Foxworth has placed on early learning district-wide.
My question is around accessibility. I know we've heard many times from Superintendent Kennedy about the expansion of Head Start. How many more students are we going to be able to serve with the expansion? And is, are we set to expand by the start of next school year? Again, I know we expanded, we've already expanded, but just thinking about how we continue to open up classrooms for Head Start across the system.
Go ahead, Ms. Kennedy.
I see Ms. Foxworth sort of like leaning ass. Come on up, please.
Good evening. Head Start's a little bit different than our public pre-K. Is that it's based on our funding that we get from the Office of Head Start. So we're only funded for a certain amount. And in January, I came to you with a discussion about converting. And so we are looking to expand Head Start by two classrooms and expand early Head Start, I think, by seven. But that's going to result in overall reduction. But that is really to focus on quality. So as Congress in December did pass some additional funding, and as that funding comes down through the federal government to the states, that we will explore opening up more classrooms. But right now, we are going to add more early Head Start because our waiting list, as you've heard me say, is about over 500 students.
Well, and then a follow-up question then to, outside of Head Start, so for the standard early learning. What, so what does it look like? How many students are we serving there versus Head Start? Can I just, I mean, and if you're not ready for that, maybe I can ask for later.
Sorry, off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to-
Sure. I can give you a range, and I can come to give you some details, but we serve, we're funded for 1,001. We're not quite at our funded enrollment for a variety of reasons, but close to it. That's the maximum we can serve in our Head Start. We serve around 2,000, a little bit more than 2,000 kids in our 4K program. We are next year, we are opening up one more infant toddler class at Mini Hughes this year by the end of March. And next year, as of right now, we're only scheduled to open up one more very creative CD class at West Ashley High School as a way to support our, our teachers. And so as of right now, our focus next year is on quality, because as, as you, we are working very hard on our, our board goals. And so we want to make sure that all these new classes that we open, that we can make sure that our students are excelling, that we're not just offering a class. We want high quality. As that super, former superintendent of Mississippi said, it's about focusing on high quality at this time.
I have a question, Ms. Simmons.
Yes, ma'am.
When I was campaigning and going door-to-door and talking with the voters, it came to my attention that there was a need for early childhood development in the West Ashley area, the area that I represent. I was wondering, and I've loosely asked this question, but I was wondering if there was the possibility that a partnership between the MUSC Children's Hospital and the new satellite MUSC at Citadel Mall, if perhaps we could do a partnership and open up, especially in that space there in Citadel Mall, to serve the community in that area.
It's something we could consider.
It's definitely, I know there's some initial conversations about looking at District 10 and West Ashley and seeing what we can do to meet the need.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
So if, if in a perfect world, if you could serve all the children you wanted to serve in this early, is the district working on projections to be able to fix her perfect world?
We do have a rollout for Universal that presented to the previous board, and it's going to, where we would have, need the most space is probably in District Two, but I don't have the numbers in front of me to tell you exactly how many. But we do have a rollout plan by phases, and that does include the early learning centers that we are talking about, because we do have an extensive need in North, North Charleston. So we do have a plan.
Because is the limitation just space, or is it funding for the teachers?
Both.
Both. So space, it's schools, and then getting the cities, like the mayor that's not going to run, to actually do something and provide space so that we can do this, right? Thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
Can you share that presentation with us from before, the one that you gave to the old board about the phases and the projections, or whatnot?
Sure, I can get it, Ms. Huggins, and she can push it up.
So why don't we do this, instead of just, we could send it out, but I would also like for this board to see the presentation. And then, as I've also said several times over the last few months, I think the answer to this is, is around this pre-K to 12 ecosystem, the idea, Ms. Watley, about partnering with other entities to try and figure this out. Ms. Huggins and I met with Mayor Summy, what's it, last week, and we talked about how we can strengthen that partnership to do, do these types of things. So, so I believe that's, that's one avenue in terms of a solution for all of our early learners.
To take it a step further, I agree with Dr. Kennedy, because I really think even the town of Mount Pleasant and discussions with them, I mean, they're really looking ways to work in collaboration with us for something that is, you know, this important for the collaboration between the town and the district.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gorbowski. And if I could brag on, on Ms. Foxworth here, knowing our limitations in space and funding at this time, and the early childhood symposium that Mrs. Foxworth, brilliant team, put together earlier this year, we brought in childcare providers from all over the district, because we're concerned that A, we don't have the space and funding, and B, we want to make sure that, that all students have the high quality regardless of where they are. So Ms. Foxworth started that work in the fall, and we're really looking, looking to expand those partnerships across the district.
Yeah, we have two spring, we have two sessions in the spring that we're working on to offer to childcare providers on a Saturday morning.
Thank you. If there's not any more questions, we will move on to item 4F, teacher compensation.
The moment you've all been waiting for.
Mr. Brigman?
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. I have the great honor of having worked since August with a task force made up of our educators from here in Charleston County School District to tackle this issue that we are going to talk tonight about compensation. It is really, most of the work is tied to truly what you've already heard, the cost of housing and living here in this wonderful city of ours. So the task force is actually, they've done this work. They're going to make the presentation. We promised to keep it to 15 minutes. They've practiced and rehearsed to make sure we get everything in. So if the task force would come to the podium. And to the mic. Each task force member will introduce themselves, and we'll go through the presentation and take questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brigman. My name is AJ Barnes. I was last year's District Teacher of the Year, an educator of 11 years, and currently serving as a high school recruiter for Charleston County School District. We want to, I think we're going to wait, Mr. Brigman, to introduce the rest of our members as they come up and speak. Maggie, could you cue the video, please?
Luckily, I'm a little disciplined when it comes to finances, but just to kind of paint a picture, I do live at home with my mom. And in the back of my mind, I have goals, financial goals. It's a little hard to achieve those goals with the salary that I am starting out with.
I work this full-time, and then I have three other part-time gigs that I, you know, find time in my schedule to work so that I can afford the cost of living here and, and be able to stay in Charleston.
My husband and I both work more than one job in order to make ends meet.
The last few years, I've been tutoring after school, two to three days a week, doing, teaching summer school in the summer and picking up extra jobs throughout the summer.
The job of being a teacher is incredibly challenging, and it's gotten more challenging over the years. So what I would say is that as people are taking on extra jobs outside of teaching, it's impacting their ability to, just to do what they need to do to be an excellent teacher, because it is so consuming. So if you're not able to devote all of your time, and unfortunately, time beyond the school day to that role, it's, it's definitely impacting it.
I can remember one, one teacher in our department who was working two part-time jobs, and we had a conversation, you cannot be the best teacher for your students if you are tired.
When I first moved here, I was living in a one-bedroom, one-bath apartment, 734 square feet, the cheapest option in Mount Pleasant. So I'm talking, no amenities, nothing like that, just one bed, one bath. And it was $805 a month. Looking at that, rent was over 50% of what I was bringing home. If we look at the teacher pay right now, and this is before taxes, $43,146. The same one-bedroom apartment, if I were to go there and try to rent it today, would be $1,600 a month. So we're still looking at 50% of our take-home pay is just going to- So we're still looking at 50% of our take-home pay is just going to living.
As a single adult woman, if I ever want to live on my own, like I simply cannot afford it as a teacher. And if I want to live in an area close to my school or be nearby where I'm not driving 45 minutes to get to work every day, I'm always going to need to rely on roommates and having roommates. And that's just not something I anticipated as, you know, as you get older and you move into more adulthood and you're like, oh, I'm still always going to need a roommate because I just can't afford it.
Five years ago, I went to try to buy a home. I went to try to move from John's Island to Mount Pleasant so I could be closer to Wando High School where I was teaching. And I could not afford a single place to live in Mount Pleasant. And that's with two incomes and with a master's and 15 years of teaching experience.
I know teachers we don't start out with a lot, but I also have some teacher friends who are working in Charlotte and they make more than me with the same bachelor's degree. So it's just a matter of where you live and how much that place values your educational experience, I feel like. It's tough when I think of how much schooling I go through and how much professional development I go through. And then at the end of the day, it's just the quality of life is, is quite poor. So I think if we're professionals, I think that compensation as professionals is, is something that we can ask.
I would say there's not a teacher in the classroom around the district that hasn't thought about leaving because of pay.
No matter how much I love my job, no matter how much I enjoy coming to work every day and doing what I do, because I do. It makes it a lot harder to think that I can do this in the long term. Obviously, people leave the classroom all the time because of compensation and I never thought that was something that I would do, but it's definitely something I've had to kind of consider and, and really think about with myself over.
Teachers should, number one, feel valued within our district. They should feel like they're being respected as professionals and being given the space to be that professional that they are. And also to feel valued in pay.
I'll, I'll say it, being a teacher has probably, it is the number one reason why I might not have children. And I mean, that's just like, Harris said, I wasn't going to cry, but like that is a fact of life.
At this school alone, I know I can count several amazing teachers who have left the field because it doesn't compensate you for the work that you do.
If we can maintain our teachers here locally and provide them with the care and the support that's needed, we can retain our teachers here in Charleston County.
I also want to take a moment before we begin tonight and thank all of the educators in this room who have shared their vulnerability and honesty with us prior to our presentation because truly I hope our work reflects your voice and need. Thank you. Good evening. The voices you heard in that video portray the reality of many of the financial challenges that our young educators face in Charleston County School District. Taking that into consideration, before we jump into numbers, it's truly important that we take a moment to discuss the current state of our profession, both across the state and here within Charleston County. We look at this side-by-side comparison. On the, on the left, you see numbers from the statewide report from Sarah that's released every year as well as our own retention data. And what is most alarming, obviously, is that number that's over 8,000 teacher departures across the state. That's the highest it's been since 2018 and a 20% increase since 2021 when we returned from the pandemic. But I think what is important to us locally is the fact that our own departure percentage is a full percentage point higher than the rest of the state. And as a veteran teacher, our veteran teachers are the most precious commodity that we own as a district. And yet, 37% of our total teacher departures are teachers with less than five years of experience. I cannot understate the importance of the experience that walks out the door and the impact that that has on a school, culture and climate. If we look at how our vacancies are filled, as a recruiter, this is now my role, and this past year, 45% of our vacancies heading into this year were filled with new teachers. These are new teachers that are either traditional graduates or alternative pathway teachers. And so if we solely rely on that supply, new teachers entering the field, the numbers are bleak. Traditionally, historically, nationally, the number of college graduate, traditional pathway educators is dwindling. And if we look at it locally as a state level, the number or the percentage of educators in the state of South Carolina that are recent South Carolina grads that were hired this past year to fill new positions, that percentage is the lowest it's been in 15 years, 17%. So the reality of it is, is we are competing against industry and business that can offer higher pay, flexible schedules, and to be totally honest with you, as you heard tonight, a better work balance.
Eric Stallings, Assistant Director, Pathways to Teaching. So before I became the Assistant Director, Pathways to Teaching, I had the opportunity to recruit for our middle secondary and alternative program schools. And so I spent time in colleges across South Carolina, Georgia, Florida, and in North Carolina. And even though we have incentives in place, it's still not enough. When students see Charleston County, they think of the beach, they want to be here, but they run from us because they know that they can't afford to pay their rent and we cannot recruit them fast enough. I work with building pathways to teacher certification. So with Men of Charleston Teach, Teach Charleston, TA to Teacher, you know, that's only going to hold us so much, but we can't continue to build pathways if we don't have the cost of living, if they can't afford to live in Charleston, so.
Good evening. My name is Lakevia Mills. I am the 2020 district teacher of the year and currently a teacher effectiveness specialist for Charleston County School District. I am going to talk about the Charleston cost of living in the housing market. So you can move forward. All right. And another one. So currently, the teacher compensation task force is working closely with Craig Logan and the Regional Housing Coalition to provide a realistic picture of the housing and rental market currently in the Charleston tri-county area. Many of our young educators and even veteran educators have a dream of owning a home, but sadly, this is just a dream and not a reality for many. Many of the educators can't afford to live in the communities that they teach in, especially with the Charleston metro area growing three times faster than the US average with around 33 people moving to Charleston every day. This leads to a direct impact, and you can go to the next one, on the rental and housing market pushing the housing prices to increase to at least 17%. And if you take a look at the slide, you see the average home prices for the tri-county area with Charleston County averaging about 500,000. And due to this average home price, it's unrealistic for an educator to work and live in Charleston County.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Taryn Whaley and I am a first-year teacher, second grade here in Charleston County. And I'm going to be giving a breakdown of the salary scenario for a first-year teacher like me, just fresh out of college. All right, so someone with a bachelor's degree at a step zero level, someone like me, 22 years old, single status, single benefits, bringing in $43,000 a year. These are the breakdowns for the cost of living in Charleston. As we've mentioned before, Charleston is a very expensive place. It's a beautiful place, but it comes with a cost. So just for a two-bedroom, two-bathroom place with a roommate, that's already $1,000 out of the check. And I forgot to mention 2,400 per month you're bringing in. Car payments, auto insurance, cell phone bill, utilities, gas, cable, internet, student loans, that's a very big portion. And people like me want to go back to school. So that's on top of going back to grad school and getting a master's, groceries, gas. And these are just very conservative numbers. These are basic necessities that you need in order to survive. Things like life events, like vacation, entertainment, having fun with family and friends, medical expenses are not included in these numbers. That's just something to be considered about.
Good evening. Thank you for your service to our kids and our community. My name is David Benezi. I'm a second grade teacher in Charleston County School District. The next slide, if you fast forward to an educator with 15 years of experience and a master's degree, similar to where I'm at currently, 10 years and a master's degree, you can look at that on the left side. And when you total up all those expenses, that's a plus $118 for someone with 15 years of experience and a master's degree for the rest of the month. And I'll tell you, when something comes up, I had appendicitis. That bill took me two years to pay off at $100 a month. And then if you look at the other side, the dream of owning, owning a home is just unattainable. And for somebody that, for me personally, was the first in my family to go to college, put in 10 years and two degrees and not be able to even come close to that dream of owning a home for my family, it's really difficult. Thank you.
I'm Jody Stallings, a 30-year veteran of CCSD schools.
And I'm Michelle Nichols, a 20-year veteran. Mr. Stallings and I also represent the Charleston Teacher Alliance.
So let's get this down to the barest essentials. Housing is the most basic need. You can't teach if you don't have a place to live. Experts have given us what is called the 30% rule, which states that to be financially healthy and financially sound, no more than 30% of your income should be devoted toward housing. The problem is, it's not 1990 anymore. Housing is skyrocketing. My home is a perfect example. I bought a home in 1994 in a middle-class neighborhood for $68,000. That same house today would cost me $663,000. That is an 875% increase since 1994. And the, the problem is not just purchasing, the problem is also in renting.
If landlords use the 30% rule, which most do, in order to qualify for an apartment, an annual gross salary of approximately $78,000 would be required. Under the current pay scale, no teacher in CCSD with a bachelor's degree could ever qualify to rent an apartment in today's market without having a second or even a third job. With purchasing a home, the 30% rule would require an annual gross salary of $128,000. Under the current pay scale, no teacher, regardless of how many degrees or how much experience, would ever make enough to purchase a home.
I think back to that previous slide, please. Some argue, and it is fair to say, that teachers only work nine months out of the year. And so we can supplement our income with a second job. That's totally fair. So we increased that 30% rule to 40%. And even so, by doing that, purchasing is well out of the question, but renting is within our reach if we go with a base salary of $58,000. This is not about paying teachers what they deserve. This is about paying teachers what they need to survive.
My name is Jason Brucini. I'm a high school teacher here in CCSD. This is our ask. So if we start a teacher with a bachelor's degree right out of college at $58,000, you take a look on the left, they can afford rent now and they actually have a little bit left over to maybe save, go hang out with some friends, maybe something else. If you look on the right, it's a little more difficult still. We can't live alone. So they're still in the hole $452. The buzz about this idea has gone across the district and there's cautious optimism. I say cautious because multiple times when I've talked to teachers about this, they said to me, they say, Jason, I don't want to believe this because it seems too good to be true. Wouldn't it be cool if it was a reality?
My name is Natalie Bennett and I am the current district teacher of the year for Charleston County School District. I also represent the teacher roundtable who's doing concurrent work on this issue as well tonight. So you've heard from the rest of our task force and we have presented clearly why we must do something to change retention and recruitment efforts across Charleston County. So tonight, we are bringing you four solid recommendations we hope you seriously consider. First, that we move the starting salary to 58,000 for beginning teachers and increase all teachers across the schedule for 2024. Second, we want you to increase the steps from 30 to 40 in 2024. And right now in 2023, move the steps immediately to 35 and offer a retro pay. This would allow us to help keep our most experienced teachers. And lastly, we want to stress how important an early budget decision is on this item. These four recommendations combined will have the greatest positive impact on teacher retention and recruitment in Charleston County.
If you'll go to the next slide. This just gives a really quick snapshot of what these different salary scenarios look like. So in the left and the 2023 current salary structure, you see a bachelor's teacher, step zero is currently a $43,146. A bachelor's teacher, step 15 is 57,191. And a master's step 17 is 66,235. So this is our current salary structure for this current school year. If you move over to the right, you will see proposed salary considerations. One, starting at 50,000 for your first-year teacher, one at 55 and one at 58. And you'll see that for the teacher that was the bachelor, step zero at 43, when that teacher steps to step one, under the $50,000 scenario, that teacher would be at 51,000. Under the 55K, at 56,181, and under the 58, 59,246. So you can see in each scenario, it shows the teacher stepping. So step 15 to 16, the three different scenarios. And then the master step 17, stepping to 18 for the three different scenarios. Most of our teachers have master's degrees that would benefit from that education level. So I'll stop here and open up to any questions for the task force or any, any of, any of us. Mrs. Huggins was also part of our group when she was available and we talked about a number of things that impact teacher recruitment retention.
I'll, I'll start. Was anybody from the district's finance department involved in this at all?
No, sir. This was totally made up of teachers. It was a task force of teachers looking at teacher compensation as well as principals.
So we haven't done any analysis whatsoever as to what this would potentially cost and how this would fit into any of our budgets going forward?
We have. We shared this information with the finance department. Mrs. Williams, of course, has since left the district. Mrs. Carlin's been involved as well, so has Mr. Kennedy. So the information was shared some time ago for different scenarios of what the cost would be, but they didn't participate on the task force.
And, and the reason I bring this up is this really should have come in front of finance and audit. I think that would have been the better presentation. You would have had better people that could sit there and understand how to explain where we're going to come up with the money to, you know, pull something like this off. I mean, I'm 100% in favor of paying teachers and paying them more. I think that the most underpaid group of individuals I've had the pleasure of ever working with. But I say that because I ask you to help us find where this money's going to come from. Yes, we have the village, but we also have the legislators. I mean, it's going to be a real tough task and I always, you know, I question, and I hope you guys stick around for the finance committee report so you can hear what we have to deal with on a, you know, what I deal with on a daily basis and looking at the finances and working with the district and figuring how we do a balanced budget. So I'm glad to hear that finance is involved, but it doesn't surprise me once again that I'm left in the dark and have no clue. I hear all these great passionate pleas, but then I also know what the raw numbers are and I'm scratching my head going, where? So, you know, we've got to find that where.
Certainly. We are certainly happy if Mr. Kennedy tells us to go next to audit and finance and present this information as well. I will say with the recruitment issues that districts, not just Charleston, are facing, we may find the money because of vacant positions, to be quite honest with you. It's, it's a, it is. I have been in the district in the HR role for a very long time. I've never seen the landscape like I see now and it's really serious. And so I feel this presentation was very important to the board because the board, as the head of HR, the board needs to understand what we are facing. I've never seen such a decline in the number of young people who are becoming teachers and then they're experienced individuals like myself who can retire and are looking at other opportunities. And I've never seen private industry come in and recruit teachers like I'm seeing now. So I understand, Mr. Gorbowski, we're more than happy to come to audit and finance. This team is very willing to come.
I mean, it's a great, it's a, it's a wonderful presentation. It lays it out and it shows one side of the story. We're going to have to work real hard on the second side.
I understand. I appreciate your comments.
Important to note here too, Mr. Gorbowski and, and board members, is that post-pandemic, third-party educational companies. third-party educational companies appear real attractive to teachers. They can work from home, as you heard one of the teachers on here say, she can't start a family yet. They have flexibility that the school day doesn't necessarily always afford. So now, more so than ever before, we're faced with challenges of keeping folks in the classroom because they can teach elsewhere, online, they can work for virtual companies. And so it has been fairly problematic as we've worked with principals over the last couple of weeks on various things as we think about going into the new school year.
I kind of had a comment more than a question, but after spending a couple of hours on the phone with Ms. Denny over the calendar, trying to get some resolutions on that, she drew my attention to the issue of teacher retention being a lot of the feedback you all were taking and with the calendar issue. So when this task force report came up, I was looking at the numbers. I was alarmed. It seems that we've almost dropped in half over the years. I guess you guys gave us like, what, three years? Or I'm not remember the numbers exactly, but I just remember the number of teachers leaving was alarming. The retention rate is alarming. But I also echo Mr. Grabowski's, I've been looking at the audit and finance and especially that procurement audit that came out and repeatedly talking about inconsistencies district-wide when it comes to the money. And I very much want to give them what they're asking. I come from public service and the daughter of a public servant, and I do grasp. I mean, I was talking with Ms. Denny when we were talking about the pay. When I became a police officer, I took home every two weeks five hundred and eleven dollars. A lot has changed here. And I also understand the cost of living, how much it skyrocketed coming from here. So, but, you know, in conversations with finance and audit and looking at the stuff, I feel the same way. I mean, what do we do? I mean, I echo a lot of other board members in wanting to take a look at, you know, seventy-three percent of our budget comes from salaries. And a lot of that in retirement, which a lot of that is at seventy-five Calhoun. I have always said that our healers, our educators, and our protectors should be our highest paid.
Mr. Brigman, has there been any analysis done as to the total cost? If this were to be in place right now, what would the total cost increase be? Do you have any idea?
I don't have the numbers, and I don't think that Jackie or Mrs. Carlin is, sorry, Mrs. Carlin is ready to share. They're still conducting some analysis. My group has looked at some of it, but really I only trust the finance folks to make that call.
So here's my big takeaway from what I heard. I don't think we should give them fifty-eight thousand. I think paying the bare minimum to barely survive is unacceptable. So I would challenge the district. And as part of the audit and finance, I will stand by this. I think we need to come up with some kind of other option where we say we want to be the highest-paid district within a one-hour drive, or pick the number. If we're competing, Charlotte, I looked it up while that young lady was speaking, it's sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. At thirty-two seventy, you multiply it by twenty-eighty, it's sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. So we're not even kind of close. So I would personally say fifty-eight is insultingly low.
We, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. The task force certainly did discuss that. When you look at the data we presented, it's still not, I think the slide that Jason showed, showed that to buy a home, it was not enough. So yes, I understand where you're coming from. And I agree.
Yeah, so allow me to make a couple of comments here. So first of all, I mean, yes, I support teachers. My wife is a retired teacher, so I do support teachers. This is a complex issue, a very complex issue. So for comparisons, so the finance team, first of all, has not done the deep analysis that it would take to make a recommendation. But for comparisons, last year, when the state said that we were going to increase teacher salaries by four, four thousand dollars. And of course, they didn't fund that. And so when we did the calculation for if for CCSD to be able to do that four thousand dollar salary increase, which we did not, we did a two thousand dollar salary increase, but for four thousand, plus the step increase, the required step increase, the total amount of that was about twenty-four million dollars for four thousand dollars.
Two oh four? Two forty. Two four zero? What was the dollar?
Twenty-four million. I'm sorry.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-four million dollars. And so, so that's one, that's one piece of the equation. Another piece of the equation that's probably even more complex is the restriction that a state pay, play, pay, put on school districts in two thousand and eight with Act three eighty-eight. So we are the richest county in the state of South Carolina with property, the property values. So we actually have the wealth to be able to pay teachers what they are worth. However, because of the restriction, the state tells every school district in the state of South Carolina every year the maximum amount of mileage that can be increased. That maximum amount is a combination of two factors. The CPI, Consumer Price Index, and where the geographical area of the population change. And so we have, we have, no one in the state has received their allowable mileage increase this year yet. But we do know because the state has told us that the one component of that, the CPI is eight percent. So we know it's going to be at least eight percent. So we can, I can guess that it's going to be another one to three percent on the population. And then we have some leftover mileage from last year, very little amount in terms of the mileage number. And so the value of a single mill, of a single mill, is roughly three million dollars. So if you take, let's say you maxed out on what the state would allow. Let's say that that maximum is ten mills. Then the maximum that you can raise taxes, the maximum you can raise taxes based on state law, Act three eighty-eight, is thirty million dollars, three times ten. And so the thirty million dollars would come nowhere close to funding the rate that's being recommended. So we have, we have a reality that we have to deal with. And since I've been back in Charleston, I've railed a lot against Act three eighty-eight. And legislators say that it's just that we're in, because of the way it was created, we're in, we, the state, it's an impossible situation, they modify that Act three eighty-eight. So I just wanted to lay that out. Certainly, the finance team will do the analysis based on recommendations that was made. And then we will make a recommendation to the, to the Audit and Finance Committee based on the available revenue and what the state will allow the district to do.
This past week, I was at the legislature. So I would like to suggest to our audit and finance people too, to speak with the legislators because they emphasize many times that they are sending the money and the district is not sending the money out to the teachers. I said something about we have to keep a third of our income in savings and we're keeping more and that they're sending money. So I think we need to be real clear because they keep saying they're sending us the money and I keep saying, show me. So I hope that we can really move forward quickly because I hear the conversations of our teachers and they're like, if I don't get a raise pretty soon, I'm leaving. And they have options. And we already saw one teacher in my district who left and received twenty thousand dollars more by going to a building supply company. Our teachers have so many skills that are useful in so many different places. So this is a real urgent issue, I think, because of the retention. The state lost some twenty-one thousand teachers over the last three years. So while we may be losing teachers just in Charleston, we're losing them all over the, all over the state. So they're not coming here if they can go somewhere else where there's better pay. It's urgent.
Okay, so hold your seats. I actually agree with Mr. Kelly.
I agree with them too.
Crazy.
Yes. So my question, we are supposed to vote on this on the twenty-seventh? No?
No, ma'am. It was an information, just an update. There's been a lot of media attention, and we wanted to make, honestly, we want to make sure the full board knew what the task force was working on, so that was the purpose for tonight.
Okay, so we have an opportunity to send this back to the, well, send it to the Audit and Finance Committee. You have an opportunity, Ms. Carl, Carlin, to do the deep dive financial analysis. Do it with the fifty-eight thousand and do it with what Mr. Kelly said. I just want to say that I agree with him because if we are going to do this, we shouldn't just patch the road, we should fix it.
Excuse me, I just have a quick question from Miss Higgins and Miss Simmons. Can y'all talk a little bit more about the correlation between student retention to teacher retention?
I'll say this. Having high-quality, effective teachers is our sure way, the singular way, the most important way. One of the teachers spoke about it, guaranteeing student success. And so if we want to see scholars advance and be successful, we've got to shore up our teacher core. And turning them over yearly is not going to get at that in the least.
One figure that you mentioned was the forty-five percent turnover. And I know from having worked in the curriculum department, that means with the forty-five percent turnover, that means forty-five percent of the staff needs more professional development. And when we're trying to close the achievement gap, we just can't get there fast enough. So that's, that's a significant figure as well.
You're right. You're right, Dr. Temple, and thank you for the question. Mr. Calhoun, we had a former superintendent who used to say victory is in the classroom, and that's really where it is. Teachers, without a quality teacher, they make the biggest impact on student growth and student achievement. And even beyond that, they provide a lot of the wraparound services that many of our students receive. And so without a high-quality, effective teacher in every classroom, we'll never reach the goals that the board has established for us. And Dr. Temple, you're so right. Supporting teachers goes well beyond just pay, but instead making it a quality working environment where teachers can flourish. So, Mr. Calhoun, again, thank you. Teachers are the heart of what's going on in our classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Brigman, when we lose a teacher, let's say if we lost ten teachers, how many seats do we actually refill?
Say that again, sir.
When we say if we were to lose ten teachers, how many of those seats do we actually refill?
Oh, right now, at this point in the year, I'd have to look back at Kathleen, who's had some teacher recruitment, but maybe three. I mean, it's, it's tough right now. It's not like anything we've really seen. You know, normally, even this time of year, we would have December graduates. The number of December graduates, especially locally, this year was very slim. So it's just not like anything we've seen. We're not able to recruit from other areas around the southeast as well. So a strategy we used back in late two thousand that worked quite well, but not anymore. One other thing I will just comment on the recommendation about the steps. We're very grateful that this year, for the current school year, that we went from step twenty-six to step thirty. I will tell you, a very reasonable fix as far as cost that my group has looked at is taking this to step thirty-five or step forty impacts about three hundred experienced teachers that we don't want to lose. And it was about one point five million dollars based on what my staff looked at. So honestly, we need to keep those experienced teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. I guess we all do. Just real quick, though, I would like to hear the exit interviews. Is there a way that we could have access?
We have exit interviews, but we also have data based on when an employee leaves. It's not so much an exit interview, it's what they tell their supervisor for the reason that they're leaving. So we use that data for our turnover report.
Could you share that with us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Brigman, well, actually, first, just want to name that although we appreciate all the educators that have come in here and spoken, I think it's also important to acknowledge that it's incredibly dehumanizing to even have to come and do something like that, to have to share stories about your personal finances. And I think, I mean, as a person who left the classroom, one of the two reasons, I won't talk about the second because it's a story for another day, but one of the two reasons was pay. When I started teaching in Mississippi, I was making thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I'll never forget that because I did have a roommate and I still had to take out student loans to supplement my living. And so I get it, and I also just hate the fact that you even were pushed to the point to come in here and share such personal stories with us. And I hate that we are in the situation we're in where the system is just so trash in how we come at this. But a question that I do have is, while we're working out the financial piece of it, has there been any consideration about additional benefits? For instance, you know, folks who serve in the military get discounted everything, right? Like, are there any programs, are there any opportunities for us to, you know, work with the government to get, to get alternative benefit systems for teachers?
We have, especially the recruitment team has worked with either apartment complexes, health clubs to get discounts, all types of things, car dealerships, anything we can think of to help. It almost needs a full-time person that works on those types of initiatives because it's, I'd say, sometimes complex. And then communications has done some things in the past as well. Mr. Barrowie is talking about teacher housing, and I think we have to be careful with that as well because I could see it for our first-year teachers, our new teachers. And I think there's a way to really combine professional development with that, but it's not for our fifteen-year teacher. And so I'm not shooting down, please, no, Jeff, I'm not shooting down the idea of teacher housing, but it's not the fix for thirty-six hundred teachers in our district. But thank you. I appreciate your comments, Mrs. Waters, too. It's been very, it's been a wonderful experience working with the task force and the teachers that have come forward either to email us or, you know, been willing to share their stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question for Mr. Kennedy. Do you want a formal vote to do the deep dive on this? Do you want a motion of formal vote, or is that something that you want to take on on the administrative side?
So when we, as part-
I'm talking financial.
So as a part of the budget development process, every year, we take a look at salaries across the, across all labor groups, and we certainly would do that this year. And what Ms. Williams has done, she's taken a look at different levels of increases, including the fifty-eight thousand. I think she looked at one at fifty thousand, and I can't remember what the third one is. But when we come to the Audit and Finance Committee with the early discussion on budget, we will have the, we will have that full analysis done along with analysis on other aspects of the district's finances. If that makes, if that, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I'm specifically looking for a deep dive on the financial impact to the district to meet the requested fifty-eight and what each, say, thousand dollars on top of that fifty-nine, sixty, whatever the incremental increase would be. Also, I'm assuming there's going to be increases at the assistant principal and principal, like, it's going to, you know, the balloon's going to swell.
Yeah, yeah, increases on non-salaries, that contracts that have escalation costs. So when we do, when we come to the Audit and Finance Committee, there will be that deep dive, as you call it, that lays all of that out. And then, and then we will have revenue projections, both state and local. We will give you the Audit and Finance Committee options on different options for revenue, for local, in terms of the mileage, the mileage rate. And then if there's a need to make adjustments, that's where in the budget, you have those options also.
Okay. In which case, I'd like to make a motion. I know this is an informational item. I'd like to make a motion to set aside the rules for informational item. And the motion would be to add to the Board of Trustees meeting this month, a directive to ask the district to meet the one point five million dollar requirement to hit step forty. What, to hit step forty? So the motion is to set aside the Roberts rules that doesn't- So the motion is to set aside the Roberts rules that doesn't allow for motion and to add to the, to the Board of Trustees meeting this coming month on this topic.
If I, if I may, if I may. So I don't, I don't, I don't consider the 1.5 million. I don't know if it's 1.5. That's what, you know, we haven't, I mean, finance hasn't taken a look at it. But that, going from step 30 to 35, or 30 to 40, it's not a significant dollar amount in the overall scheme of the, of the budget. And so, and so that's one point. And the second point, it is, is very difficult to analyze just one piece of like, of a huge budget. So my preference is to come to the Audit and Finance Committee. I don't know the date that we're doing that to do, do, do an initial analysis so that they can see the full, they being the Audit and Finance Committee, can see the full picture.
And Dr. Kennedy, I'd have to agree, because mainly because people have to realize we're dealing with three budgets. We're dealing with a budget that was approved two years ago. We're dealing with a budget that was approved by a board that starts in the fiscal year July 1st. And now we're working on our own budget. So we really have to be careful here. You're right, it's not a large sum of money. But nevertheless, you know, if you listen to my report in the next half hour, which I'm sure not everybody's going to be sticking around for, you're going to see what we deal with in trying to keep this, you know, freight train going. But they are possible. Everything is possible. Anything's possible. We've got to have that dream. But we got to be careful here.
All right, we burned 1.5 million in payroll tonight. We can do 1.5.
There's a motion on the floor?
There is. It's waiting for a second. Motion would be to set aside the rules. And it would require a two-thirds vote. To turn informational into an action.
So I would love to do, to ask the staff to do something, but I don't want to mandate the number. I would love to-
It would be to add the, it would be to add the topic to board so that we could mandate it. That gives them two weeks to do the assessment between now and board.
Is that enough time?
To do the assessment on the one, on the third, well, I don't know if it's 1.5. The assessment on the third, step 30 to step 40 is what you're asking.
That's right. That's right. And I think Mr. Martin said it best. He was the first one that spoke tonight. And he said, "Your budget reflects your priorities." That was the most profound thing I've heard. And we say that our priorities are in this, in the students. And we're talking about 300 experienced educators that are fixing to walk out the door. And, and you said 1.5 was not a big deal, so I, where's, I don't, what's the hesitation?
So, so, so there's no hesitation in terms of being able to do this in two weeks. I can do this in two weeks with our Audit and Finance Committee Chair. I simply said that we typically do not do individual analysis on the, on the budget without presenting the full picture to the board. But if the, to the Audit and Finance Committee, but if the board votes tonight to, to isolate this one area, certainly we can do that within two weeks.
And Mr. Kelly, I have a question. Ms. Carlin. You're, you're wanting this to be done for fiscal year '23 that we're in right now?
That's right. So that, so that, yes, that's right.
Thank you.
So what you're saying is that if we, we go to step 40 now, teachers who are on the pay grade would get their increase now?
That are at 30 and, and senior on 30, then that it would continue on up. So I believe the number is 200.
So step 31 to 40 would see an increase. Does that make sense? Yes, ma'am.
Which represent our most senior-
If, if it's passed, as Ms. Carlin said. Yes, if it's passed.
Which it wouldn't pass tonight. We're talking about adding it to.
I'll second it.
But if I understand it, you haven't done any financial analysis on what this two costs. You're just basing it upon your-
No, sir, I, I have. My department has run the numbers. It was based on, I believe, 266 teachers to go 30 to 35.
260 teachers.
To go 30 to 35. And then an additional number was about 300 that figures into the numbers up to 40. And if I recall correctly, it was about 1.5 million to go to 40. I could be off slightly, but it's not much more than that. And, and I, I think I shared that with, but she hasn't had a chance to really look at it.
But, and again, the, the motion is to add it to the agenda so that we can actually vote on implementing it.
Ms. Carlin, would you have the opportunity to look it over and make sure that we don't get the district in financial trouble making this move?
Yes, ma'am, that's part of my job. Yes, ma'am.
And the pushback on the other steps? By not increasing the other steps and giving, you know, we're isolating one small group.
What we're, what we're doing, Mr. Grabowski, is currently the, the steps stop at 30. So if you have 32 years of experience, you don't receive a step. So what we're doing is awarding the teachers who are 31 to 40 a step.
I think what he's asking is those teachers who are below step 30, what about the pushback from them? Because they're like, what about?
Well, it's not, it's not exclusionary of them.
They already got the step, so-
Okay.
The schedule, the state schedule is zero to 23. We originally were zero to 26. We just approved zero to 30 for the current year. So you're 31 and up, do not see an increase.
So can we amend, can we amend the motion to make sure that we're getting the analysis on the, the 30 to, to 36? In addition to asking for a fuller financial analysis on whether this can be done?
Certainly, absolutely. And that's why I asked Mr. Kennedy if he needed a motion to do the full financial deep dive, which he said he does not. He's going to do that administratively.
The full, the full, the full deep dive on the 30 to 40 step or across the whole budget?
The entire budget. So I'm sorry, I might have-
But I'm not mandating a date. I was asking for an amendment.
Because you mentioned that you don't typically do this out of context. Maybe we need to see both options in context and then figure out what to do.
So if, if, if the motion is a current year, current year fiscal year '23 cost, we can do that in isolation, not isolation. I don't want to call it isolation, but-
I know what you mean.
Yeah. So my, my assumption going in, you're talking about the FY '24 budget, which I have concerns about, but in terms of isolating. But we can do this analysis. We can have it on the 27th. That's not a big deal for the finance team. All right. For, so that's going from step 30 to step 40. Excuse me, 30, 31 to step 40 for fiscal year '23. And just keep in mind, whatever that number is, it's going to be a double of that number for the FY '24. It's, it's going to roll over, say, into FY '24, which again, is not a big deal to do the analysis.
Understood, okay.
Not to mention the fringe benefits. All our benefits, I mean, we haven't figured out the state requirements because this is like taking on an FTE with SIR money and losing the SIR money. And suddenly I've got an FTE that I have to find money to pay for.
So, so-
I, I feel very uncomfortable doing something without doing a full analysis on it. I agree with it, and I think you, you've got to get some time. You're in the middle of your budget.
I will, we'll provide the full analysis and the board can decide.
So we seconded, Ms. Temple, Temple and I, both, whatever name you want to name.
So the, the motion is, well, there's two motions. The first one is a, is a point of, Madam Chair, would you permit a voice vote for the setting aside of rules?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to set it, the, the first motion is to set aside the Roberts rules and conform, convert informational to an action item. The motion that we would then vote on for that action item.
Let, let's take it one motion at a time. Is that okay?
Sure.
Ms. Roberson was out of the room when we were discussing-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you clarify for Ms. Roberson what the second motion is?
No worries.
The first one is we're going to set aside the rules.
The first one's to set aside the Roberts rules to convert the information to an action. The motion that we would then be voting on if that passes would be to ask the district to bring us a report at Board of Trustees so we can vote on an immediate implementation of step 31 through 40, starting the day after Board of, for the, this current fiscal year. The voice vote would be for the setting aside.
Set aside it.
We're done with the discussion. That's it. That's right.
We're setting aside Roberts rules, not changing it.
Yes.
Ms. Temple. Okay, Mr. Grabowski.
Aye.
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 So I make a motion that we put Board of Trustees, that we put, that we ask the district, back up, make a motion that we add to the 27 March Board of Trustees meeting the increase from step 31 to 40, expecting the district to bring us a full financial report of that cost only at the board meeting.
I second it.
Second by Dr. Temple.
As for FY '23, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
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 Dr. Temple.
She did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The motion, the motion carries.
Yeah, motion carries, obviously. Okay, if, if we're finished, we will move on to item 5A on the agenda. Who is joining?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I am sure, so I apologize. So I'm not sure who's got, in the meeting. So, so we have a 5A, so the policy GCLE, so I'll ask Ms. Huggins to discuss that.
Very quickly here, we appreciate Mr. Kelly working with us. There's a new state law that you may be aware of. I think several of you have received correspondence and forwarded it to us, so thank you. That requires the principals of elementary schools to provide at least 30 minutes of unencumbered time to full-time instructional staff. So Mr. Kelly has worked with us to draft the policy that is included in today's board materials, GCLE, that defines unencumbered time as 30 minutes where teachers are provided time that's self-directed and free from any responsibility. And it also further defines what the time must not include. Parent-teacher conferences, bus duty, IPM 504s, team meetings, professional development activities, and supervising students. And so we have it here for you as information. The law does require that we forward this, that we adopt this within three months, I believe, of, of the state law. Ms. Simmons, do I need to add anything? You sure? Do you have any questions?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Same. Yes, ma'am. Can we make the motion?
Let me just ask one question. I know that you used the model that came from the South Carolina School Board Association. Did you do a lot of amending or pretty much use what they recommended?
We pretty much recommended, we pretty much used here what they recommended. Isn't that right, Mr. Kelly, in, in, in your review?
There were, there were a few minor changes and, and they were, I honestly don't even remember what they were. They were very, they were-
It's noted in blue.
Yes, ma'am. That was one suggestion that Mr. Kelly gave down below is that we, if, if persistent circumstances prevent teachers from taking advantage of their unencumbered time, Mrs. Roberson, that the principals have to notify the superintendent within so many days of why the time was missed.
Previously, it gave the principals the option, and I said that it should be mandated.
So can we make the motion?
Yes, ma'am, we'd be grateful for that.
So just make the motion as, as it's stated on the recommendation.
So I think Ms. Waters made the motion, Mrs. Watley and Mrs. Dr. Temple seconded for the moving policy GCLE, unencumbered time, to, to the board on the 27th for first reading.
Okay, please see the screen. And if there's a problem with your vote being properly reflected, speak now. Otherwise, the motion carries. Moving on to Paulis, the next item under policies, 5B, GB, EB. Can we have a reading of the proposal, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah. Sorry. Essentially, I can read it if you'd like, but essentially there's two House bills that are working, sorry, General Assembly bills that are working through the South Carolina State Legislature right now that, that references kind of material. There was also, there's, I, let's explain that in exactly, there, there was reason, staff reason that, that we wanted to bring this forward at this time. And, and so I worked with council to work on making sure that we didn't violate Title VII, which of course is the nondiscriminative, nondiscrimination federal law. It explicitly calls out sex, but there's some case law, or there's, there's now set case law that, that combines sex and gender together. And so what the, the goal here is to ask not, the goal of the policy is to ask staff not to initiate conversations with students about their preferred pronouns, like the, the staff members' preferred pronouns, nor to have to prompt the students about the students' preferred pronouns simply from a distraction standpoint is the, is the, the goal. I brought this forward as a, as a draft, just as an informational, so it could be publicly available, prompting comments, feedback, which is ultimately the, the goal. So this is literally just for information that we are working through in response to parental emails, statements about issues that we are dealing with it and addressing it right away.
What did you say those legislative bills were again?
It's 274 and 424.
Is that H or S?
S. Yes. Pardon? What's the other one?
What's the other one?
2, 274 and, and 424.
So they both originate in the Senate?
That's right. 274 stalled and set up the Medical Affairs Committee right now. And you said the other one was 424? That's right.
Oh, there are not parallel bills in the House.
Perhaps not. It may not. But frankly, there are, this, this is whether the, whether the state legislature leads the way or we do. This is the appropriate direction for us to take the district.
As he's done, Bill, I'm sorry, real quick. This, this bill has been referred to the Committee on Education, has been stalled out since January 19th as well.
So I have a question. Who exactly provided this added language in this proposal? Is it a national group that got this verbiage from?
It came from a number of different sources. And so I'm being cautious here just because of the, I, I think I'd have to explain further in executive session, Dr. Temple, willing to talk with you about it, or the, the whole board. But there's an ongoing personnel matter that I can't discuss openly.
In this motion that you, or in this background information, you say that there are legal teams and stakeholders the originators are engaging with. So I'm wondering, who are these legal teams and stakeholders? And are these public meetings?
Will, will be, will, will engage with. So as in, we will continue to work with District Council. Will, will be, will engage with. So as in, we will continue to work with district council and stakeholders being, this policy was reviewed by two principals before the draft was brought forward. Because what I was being cautious of is I don't want to make it against policy to teach sex ed. Don't want to make it against policy to have a conversation with a student who comes to a teacher and says, "Hey, I'm suffering from a mental, a psychological problem. I, I believe I might be the opposite gender and I want some help." We don't want to, we don't want to make it against policy to have those conversations because that would go against wraparound services. That would go against all sorts of principles that we all stand for. But we do want those conversations to be appropriate and, and defer to the parents. Because ultimately, those conversations belong at home, not in school. And so absent, which is what is written in the policy, a danger type thing from the student, like either suicide or something, some other kind of danger, those, those conversations should be deferred to the professionals. Like we all have agreed, the teachers are the professionals of education. This asks for the, those conversations to be deferred to counselors, mental health staff, all while in full view of the parents.
My concern with this is that, one, these things really do need to be handled at, at a district level. And my concern about putting it in policy is that there are so many implications for a situation like this. Regardless of my, my personal beliefs, right, you know, using someone's preferred pronoun doesn't bother me. It may bother someone else, but, but beneath what we think about it, there are so many implications at the individual level. And so I just think putting something like this in place is going to be very difficult. It's going to make it very difficult for the district to, to be in line with federal law, regardless of what happens in the state legislature, which, which sounds like not a lot is, movement is happening because it's, it's not appropriate according to federal law. And so I just, I know it's just for information, but I just want to name that my issue is that we will run afoul in a lot of ways and that we just, we can't really err on the side of like our personal opinions about it, but that we really need to think about the, the dynamic of the fact that we govern in a society where there are so many instances that could come up that could put the district in a compromised situation.
And, and I really think this is just being transparent, getting a discussion going. I mean, this is just for informational purposes. It's already drawn out some really great comments as to potential minefields of problems we're having. I mean, so this is just a start. I mean, this is budget week up in this, in the legislature, so there's not going to be anything done on anything, on any committees. I mean, not, so, but I do think this is a good start in being transparent so we can all talk, raise our concerns. But this isn't the final draft of anything. So it's just, it's something that maybe we should just be discussing, and that's why it's here. I think the discussion's been good. Public comments were good.
Can I just, one more thing, because I know you mentioned distracting, you know, not wanting to be distracting in the educational environment. And I'm just wondering if it might not be thing to, you know, just teach folks about respect, you know, respecting other people's choices, decisions, and not allowing them to be a distraction because it's really not in question. You know, if I say, you know, I am so-and-so, it's really, there's really not cause for discussion about it when we teach our kids to just be respectful of how people come to us and how we come to them.
And can I say just one thing? And I guess this is just information, because I'm not sure where we're going with this, but I like structure and order. And I do know the personnel matter you're referencing. But I think that we, we should do is understand that there's structures already in place. When something happens in a school, a principal handles it. If they can't handle it, it comes to the district. And then if they can't handle it, it comes to the board. And I think that we are being a little bit presumptuous in putting this out. And I think we should let things work, it's work, we should work through it at the lower level, then let it move up in order before we start reacting as a board, because we have to be careful about how we governed. And I, and we can't govern personally. We have to govern for everyone. But I, I accept the information.
So I agree a lot with what you said, but in terms of governing for everyone, it's hard to even talk.
When, when it's proper. I think that right now.
Sorry, you interrupted me. It's, it's important to govern for everyone, including the fallout that I am dealing with in my constituency and the traumatizing experience of these kids, you know, it's very important.
We may be on slim ice, thin ice right now, and maybe it might be best to go on the 6A so that we don't reference.
From a personnel matter standpoint, I think is what Ms. McKeon talked about.
Okay, we can move on. So are we just opening this up for discussion? You're not proposing? Okay. All right, then we will move on to item number six, Audit and Finance. Mr. Grabowski.
And you all stayed. I'm impressed. Thank you very much. And watch how fast we go through this. Audit and Finance, the action items. 2A was a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown in the attached resolution, which you all had. Just to give some background, this is taking money that was budgeted for Deer Park Middle School, and please step in if I overstate myself on this one. And Coran Elementary School project and moving it to Morningside so that we could move ahead. The reasons to move the project along, and we're moving about $1.5 million. The revenue for the projected part of the two is from the 2021 cent sales tax and supporting project list. So this is just a reallocation of funds, moving it from one item to the next item. So I'd like to make a motion to move this item to the March 27th consent agenda.
So I'll move.
Nice work, bro.
Shall we vote?
Was this it from now? This was an action.
Oh.
Information.
Phrase of action items.
The consent items, or do we do that at the end? You want to do it at the end?
We're moving now.
We'd have to vote on individually to see if we get consent.
Yeah, let's see. Let's vote on that.
We have to vote on it. It has to have the, have unanimous approval to go forward to the board, and then it's consent.
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Grabowski?
Yes.
What's the motion?
The motion is to approve the reallocation of funds as shown in the attached resolution.
What attached resolution? I don't see an attached resolution.
I don't see an attached resolution.
Because it was on as information.
See, the item has a series of bulleted action items. Is that what you want to move forward to the March 27th?
Well, Audit and Finance automatically moves forward to the board.
Yeah, that's true. My bad. Let me just go through these real bad. We'll go through these real quick and I'll just give you the heads up. It's my fault. You need to rein me in. It's getting late. Okay, item 2B was the fixed cost of ownership on the F-23 budget reallocation. The motion that will be going to the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown in the attached resolution, which will be attached. And basically what's happening here is once again, we have the fixed cost of ownership items. At our last board meeting, we approved a list of items that we will have to approve the funding for in the 2023-24 school year. Last year, the board approved fixed cost of ownership program for the 2023 school year to be $51 million. This resolution is to use 250 of the current contingency of 383. It's for facility maintenance, complete two stormwater repair projects at Pinehurst Elementary Media Center, research for circulation desk at the Military Magnet Academy, Pepper Hill School, which will complete the library updates in both locations. We will have approximately $133,000 for the remainder of the year. So the district is doing a real good job in keeping our budget in line and not nailing the, or taking all the contingency funds. So that will be moving on to the board for consideration. Item 2C is the 2023-2028 Capital Program Phase 5 Sales Tax Capital Maintenance Budget Reallocation. The motion is to approve the reallocation of funds to add new project that was not on the original board phase five, six-year capital maintenance plan as shown, once again, in an attached resolution. There'll be a motion to move this item to the March 27th. I mean, I take that back. Be a motion to reallocate the funds. This is a little longer. This was part of the November 3rd, 2020 referendum to extend the 1-cent sales tax for a term of six years, from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2028, to finance education capital improvement projects to include capital maintenance at schools, facilities in the district. On December 13th, 2021, the Capital Maintenance Plan 2028, which was revised on May 23rd of 2023. The proposed reallocation of fundings within the Capital Maintenance Plan is due to a savings from the Mini Hughes ES HVAC project. So that's a lot of that is because of Esser funding, if I'm correct, and which was completed with ARP funding and can be removed from the program. Savings from the Daniel Jenkins HVAC project and Deer Park Middle School Extension project. Bids both were received were lower than the budget amount. And there was a saving at the Multry Schools, Middle School Lighting, and C.E. Williams. North paving projects are no longer needed as determined by staff. There'll be requests that these savings be used to address funding needs with other projects and to add one new project to the Capital Maintenance Plan. At the end of the day, a change of funding of the maintenance plan. Really, nothing much, but another great job. And then item D is the approval of the 250,000 and above. We'll have a motion to approve the projects in the attached list. If you look at the attached list for the week ending 90, February 9th, 2023, all the items are all capital projects with no change orders or any increases. Really great job. Finally, there was an agreed-upon procedure for 2017-2022 Capital Programs Phase 4 1-Cent Sales Tax referendum. There'll be a motion to approve the contract to Elliot Davis to perform the final agreed-upon procedures for the 2017-22 Capital Program Phase 5. That's kind of an, an interesting thing because there was a, I mean, Mr. Bauer, you want to explain this one? I mean, this is really, or, or this, I tried to follow this. I mean, there was $691 million at one time. And then we had a public constituent group that came in and oversaw everything. We did an analysis to show how that capital project was going along. We spent the money and we're at, basically at the end of the project, and all we're asking right now is to spend $42,000 to have a final report, which has been requested by the citizen oversight agreement, or not requested, but I guess requested by the citizen oversight. Is that a fair statement in a nutshell? That this laid out?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So twice during each building program, we, we look to do this analysis to make sure that we have followed the rules that have been established. We did this at the midpoint in the Phase 4 program, and now we're completing this Phase 4 program. And we're looking at doing the same thing to make sure that we're aligned as we roll into Phase 5.
So we'll be bringing a motion to the board asking to spend $42,000 to finish up the last report to basically tell us how good of a job they all did in spending the $691 million. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay. Now on to the audits. We had two interesting presentations brought to us by two sets of auditors. I am going to highly recommend that the district brings these auditors back in at the March 27th board meeting to explain. I will give a nutshell as to what you really need to read these audits and try to give you a nutshell of what happened based upon the discussion that the committee had. The first one is the F-21, F-22 procurement agreed-upon procedures, AUP audit report. And that was done by done by our auditors, Malden and Jenkins.
No, I'm sorry.
Am I on the wrong one?
That's okay. No, it was done by Emily Suckcheck.
Green, Finley, and Colley are auditors. This is something that the state requires every three years, and there are standards that they follow. And so they come in and do an audit of our procurement. I ask that you all read it. I'm not going to spend much time discussing it today because I think the next audit shows you kind of an interesting situation we find ourselves when we deal with audits. This is state-mandated, and look at the size of the audit. Something happened. Something happened, and this is what we're all going to have to think about and dig deep in and really going to have to work with the district on, on the finance. In January last year, after we did a diversity study, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that, was it, the diversity study was done prior to January 2022, right?
It's called a disparity study.
A disparity study?
Yes, sir.
And that was done prior to January 2022?
So I, I don't know when the contract was let on that. Jackie?
I know when, I know when the disparity study was concluded. I don't know the contract date.
Yeah, when was it concluded?
October 2022.
October 2022. Okay, so the disparity study was done to see how we used our procurement or contracted minority or disabled vendors, correct? And the state has a policy that they would like state agencies to spend at least 10% of their contracts or award 10% of their contracts to minorities and disadvantaged companies. And what the study came back and showed is that we were actually, we're doing pretty good, that we were giving out about 46% of our contracts to minorities. And correct me if I'm wrong with my numbers on this. I'm just going for my notes. But in January of 2022, and I, I want the board to hear this, and I want you to really think about this, and I want you to read this next audit that was done. Because it's, it's pretty, I think they did a pretty good job of putting it into a level that we can try to understand. But at some point, the district realized that we had a serious problem in complying with the procurement of these or the awarding of these contracts to the minority and disadvantaged groups. And what they found was, there's a provision, provision number, it's 5230? 5230, which allows direct contracting without going through the procurement. And what happened was, we, for five years, loved that little provision and went overboard without any oversight in place. That's what, now you're hearing my opinion. So it was discovered and a second audit was requested. And this audit came out, and I don't know when it came out.
Last month.
Last month.
February 23.
Yeah, February 23. So we were presented with it two weeks ago. And you will see from the recommendations and the findings that there was quite a few problems with how the district had been using it over the last five years. I'll give you an example. Almost 85% of the contracts that went out had change orders and increases. I mean, there was documentation failures. The problem with the audit doesn't really say, it says, it doesn't discover, you know, who discovered the need, why, and what ramifications. What it does show is for the last year and a couple of months, the district has gone back and tried to correct some of these problems. Because a lot of these problems deal with just the way somebody is classified. So it's really just a certification paper trail. But then again, it's very disturbing to see that in some of the sections, contracts were awarded to CCSD families or family member, members, friends. All the documents are with the auditor, so we can see it. And the other thing that's kind of All the documents are with the auditor so we can see it. And the other thing that's kind of disturbing is I can never get a clear answer of exactly how or what the board actually knew about this problem. I know that it could have been discussed at Audit and Finance, but if you follow the way Audit and Finance works, sometimes we get these wonderful information presentations, and whoever's overseeing Audit and Finance may move this on to the board or may not move this on to the board. You're at the mercy of the, you know, the district as to what is presented to the board. And this is a serious problem in my mind. So I think we really all need to take a deep dive look into this. And when the auditors come back and present this audit, which I'm going to highly recommend they do at the board meeting, you have the questions. You have the questions to look at it because it's it's pretty not good.
But they did give a good set of general issues and next steps. I thought that was very good.
Yeah, the next step is it's I commend the district. I mean, they went and cleaned house in the procurement, but they didn't do it until February 13th of this year. So you discover a problem, you let it fester, you go and you try to correct some of it. And, you know, if you look at the way this the audit, when Esser hit, Esser's not included in this audit. And I've been asking, and we'll get to the Esser report. I mean, it's just incredible when you see the amount of money that was doled out under this direct contract without really any oversight, documentation, or corrections. Now, at the end of the day, it may become just a small amount, you know, but we'll have to, you know, really rely upon the district in explaining that to you, the board members. But this is a problem. You know, if we want to pay teachers, then we need to do a much better job of our own house of accounting for money and not allowing for, you know, groups to come in without a quote or any price, get a contract, and suddenly come in and ask for a price increase. You know, it's just that there's signs all over this audit of recommendations and findings. So but the district is, you know, trying to take steps to correct this problem. And but it's for the board is it's a something done. I like this audit firm. But also, it goes to show you, if you compare it to what the state required, look at the two audits. It's the same issue. One audit is six pages long, the other one's 32 pages long. One is because the auditors had a statement of saying, this is what you got to go look at. The other one was Mr. Kennedy said, or Dr. Kennedy said, this is what we are going to look at. So as I look at audits and I start thinking, this is kind of a problem. Because I would love to hire an audit firm that doesn't audit me. Because that's what it looks like. But when you look at something that goes into it and actually does a really good deep dive audit, they find out problems. And Mr. Kennedy, you can correct me if I'm wrong in my assessment.
I'll do that. So just to respond, so so we have to be very cautious in what we say about an external audit firm. They have a set of ethics that processes that they go through. So they certainly do not come into the district and we tell the artists what to do. So for instance, when I got here in 2018, I think it was, we had a series of audits that went back for two or three years. They indicated some serious problems with the district. Those are findings as material weaknesses and significant deficiencies, if I recall. And our internal audit department identified for several years of these high-level risk areas. Because of that, in I think 2019, there allows the state actually put the district on what they call fiscal watch. And so at the same time, a couple of years before that, we had just lost $18 million in not not a budget issue, but actually lost when we had revenues that came in below budget and expenditures came in above above budget. So that's $18 million. The artist came in to do a forensic audit, identify what all the problems were. When I came in, we took on the fiscal watch, corrected all of that, and then we changed the way that we did internal audits. That's when we did contract with external auditors. So I can document all of that. So some of the things that you, Mr. Kowalski, that you're indicating are absolutely accurate. When we discovered the problem, we can certainly demonstrate when we talked to the board officers, when we talked to the Audit and Finance Committee, and in fact, to the full board and the changes that took place because of that. So I welcome, and I don't, I mean, you don't have to request. I think we already have the auditors on slate to come on the 27th. Is that right? That's right. So both audit firms already scheduled to be on the 27th, get the same presentation that they gave to the Audit and Finance Committee. And then we can, and I'll I mean, what I can do over the next couple of days, I can demonstrate the history of what what the concerns have been for artists going back to, I think, fiscal year 12, leading up until the current period and what the district has done in each of those those instances.
And this a lot, some of this happened before Dr. Kennedy's time, and I'm going to really ask the policy liaison here to really think about going back to this. I mean, procurement gets interesting at $50,000. I mean, that's basically the state level that the state gets involved in. By, you know, by not listing or only listing 250, we've got this big window of room, as we can see, that can be used, you know, without any oversight. And I know, you know, sometimes more information is better and you know, it's with the way computer programs are set, it's really not that hard. It's a lot of pages. I understand it, but you already send me thousands of pages of financial documents anyway. I just would feel a lot better because when I read some of the fact findings and recommendations of this audit, it's really very disturbing what happened, especially considering, you know, I still have not received any, and we'll talk about this later, but so anyway, that's, we're going to have the presentation. I'm glad to hear. Thank you very much, Dr. Kennedy, for saying that. We're going to have the auditors here because they're very good and they can put it in our third grade level, you know, that we need to be able to understand it because it's complicated. But at the same time, it was a problem. It has been corrected, but it never should have happened. Five years is a long period of time to be breaking procurement laws as bad as we were breaking them. So.
You're saying that things are in place now to correct all of the issues that they identified in their audit and and the district has taken the next steps? We're modernizing our procurement processes and equipment?
So I think I heard Ms. Carlin say that the audit report was disparity study was concluded in October, October 2022. The issue that was that's under discussion here with the 5230 was identified probably this time last year, so the winter, let's say, of 2022. As soon as we discovered that problem, the problem was the the process was stopped right then, and we changed our procedures. And so the disparity study was not a simple review of looking at just a part of this operation. It looked at much more than just how how the contracts were contracts were awarded. And so therefore, the report didn't get issued until October, whereas the problem got identified way back in the winter, and those corrective actions were put in place at that point.
But one of my biggest concerns of what the committee brought up is this was found out in January. And when you look at what the allegations are, this should have been handled in January or February. And we waited a year before we stepped in and cleared up the procurement department. So we have, we no longer have a head of procurement right now. We have vacancies there, which is a very, very important department. But nevertheless.
Okay, should we save our questions until the board meeting when we?
Yes, absolutely. I was just giving you just some insight, some overview, so that you can really look at this and take time to look at it. But moving on, the monthly capital project report will come in. It will look great. The Esser update makes absolutely no sense again to me, but that's just me. I'm still waiting to get an itemized someday.
If I may. So I think I sent did we send the email out a couple of days?
Friday afternoon.
Yeah, Friday, no, Friday with the board brief. In that board brief, there's a link to all the expenditures on FY. Hold on, FY FY 2023, S3 expenditures. So from the beginning of the fiscal year to end of February. And in that, in that report, also, not the S3 report, but what the transmission of it also indicated that this week, we'll the same file for FY 22 will be on the district website. And so those one files are already there. The second file will be there later this week.
Excellent. Moving on, the 90-day enrollment count is self-explanatory and very interesting, and I think we should save questions to, you know, that should be information. We'll hold off on that at the board meeting. And finally, the monthly financial update. It's always interesting, but you know, the public needs to know that, you know, right now, and once again, Dr. Kenny, you can correct me on this one, and Jackie same, we are still spending more than what we're getting in. It's not like we're bringing in more revenue at the moment where the projections, we are going to end the year with a slight negative where we'll be dipping into our reserves.
So, if I may. So the monthly finance report that was presented to our finance committee, when was that, last week maybe? If I recall the number correctly, and I know I'm very close, is that it says that we're that we're on track to put an additional $14 million, $14 million into fund balance. So so we put those types of numbers in fund balance every year since I've been here. And so what when we develop the budgets to, in order to keep taxes at a reasonable level, we will plan on using a part of fund balance to balance the budget. And so what you're seeing this year, as you've seen the last few years, is that we have not need to use all of the fund balance that we budgeted. So that means that we are going to put more money back into fund balance. So $14 million to deposit it. And then last year, I don't know what the number was, 18 million, $13 million or something. And so we've done that consistently for since FY 19.
And that really shows a major difference of what has been happening with the district over the last five, six years compared to the 15 years earlier where they ran into that financial difference. But it also shows a potential potential because the state has that weird thing about having reserves, and we do want to have a healthy reserve, but at the same time, that is a potential to use if we're going to be raising salaries at some point.
Mr. Kowalski.
It's a good thing to know.
I clicked on that link with the expenditures, and that seems all encompassing. If you, that's every expenditure? If you buy a pencil?
All non-salary. So it should not be, no salaries in that file, right?
Yeah. So is that what you're looking for? Because, I mean, that's every purchase?
For FY 23.
Except non-salaries. It's a lot.
So that would include paying, so you're not including a vendor salaries in what they quoted?
Well, we don't have vendor salaries.
Right, you just have a vendor amount.
Services for our vendors.
Right, so you would have listed the vendor amount. So we had, I mean, there were, I don't know how many groups we funded using Esser funds. It was 100?
So this is a pretty extensive file. I think this is indicated, so it's a download from the accounting system of all of the payments using Esser dollars to outside vendors. So not so not staff, but outside vendors.
Not 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 CCSD staff. This would be all the money to all the vendors outside.
So I said, in the board brief that went out Friday afternoon, it talks about this and gives a link. It's on the website, and I'm not sure, probably in the financial division place, but so but if you go to the board brief that went out Friday afternoon, it there's a link right there. And so, Mr. Kowalski, you have asked repeatedly, as you said, not give you a summary of the Esser dollars, which we have been doing. So this is not a summary. This gives it gives all the details. Now, we can certainly summarize from that point, whatever needs to be summarized, but this is all the all the details.
Great. It's just the numbers. That's that's fair enough. That's what I asked for, and I appreciate it. I appreciate staff for coming through. And then we'll have the, so we'll have the monthly financial report. And anyway, moving on, it's late. That's the Audit and Finance report.
Is that all of the discussion on your Audit and Finance?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to other business, item seven. Miss Trudy Bulls, do we have any unanimous things that will move to the consent agenda?
Policy GCLC.
Unencumbered time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that we will move to consent agenda. Item number eight, closing items, the upcoming meetings. We have our regular scheduled board meeting on March the 27th at 5:15. And don't forget, in light of spring break, the April meeting, Cal and regular board meeting will be on the same day, which is April 24th. Do we do we start at 3 o'clock on that day, or do we have a set time? Sorry? That could get interesting. We haven't set a time yet, so we'll we'll do that when we set the agenda and depending on what's on the agenda. And with that, we will, do we have a motion to adjourn? Carol Temple? Do we have a second?
A second.
Carlotta Bailey? Do we want to do a voice vote? Or just everybody, everybody in unison? Oh, that's right. We have another meeting. That's right. Five-minute recess. And then we will convene in a special called meeting. And then we will convene an special call meeting.
The March 13th, 2023 Board of Trustees Special Called Second Meeting will come to order. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move.
Ms. Watley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Roberson seconds. Shall we voice vote or computer? Cast and confirm your vote. The contacts are so far.
I don't, I don't see it.
Would you like a voice vote? And the motion passes unanimously. We will then now go to item two, A Procurement. Is there a motion to remove the projects on the attached list?
I move.
Ms. Watley moves. Is there a second?
A second.
And Mr. Grabowski seconds. Is there any question or comment or discussion?
So, so what, this came out of finance and audit, and all that's being asked is that we move up the date rather than wait to the board member, board meeting. They need the money now to get these items, so it's pretty clear cut.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, we will call for.
I do, it just, Mr. Right, that, Mr. Barrowey. Is, is the, did, did something happen out of cycle, out of band? Did we not plan correctly? Why is this coming to a special call rather than a, a just forming?
Yes, sir. So this occurs now that we've got this $230,000 list in place. You, you approved the fixed cost of ownership for FY24 earlier this year. We were wrapping up the FY23 program as well. So the, the problem, the challenge is twofold. One is to ensure that we get those projects underway for summertime execution. That's the first reason we want to save the two weeks in which we've got pricing lined up with contractors. And then the second, the two of the projects are related to the HERSI renovation, and that's a capital project, but it's for IT programs that necessary to be executed again this summer so we can open the school in the fall. So it's really the timing of, of it all at this point.
Copy. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? All right, we'll call for the question. Cast and confirm your vote, please. And it passes unanimously. Is there a motion to convene executive session to consider items covered by attorney-client privilege?
I move.
Second.
Ms. Watley moves. Is there a second?
Who's second?
Mr. Grabowski. And the motion carries unanimously. We will convene an executive session. And the motion carries unanimously. We will convene an executive session.[166.90]